All right, well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for carving out a little bit of your time this afternoon to be part of our Board Workshop. Want to remind everyone that today's topic of the workshop is to share with the members of the Board of Education and our community, the work that the district, Cabinet, and our consultant Jim Delicia have been doing since the last time we've met, and be here today to share with you the progress that we've made with our multi-year vision. So just to remind everyone, we started this process over the summer with the collection of anecdotal and qualitative data, as I had scheduled many superintendent forums across the community, met one-on-one with many community members, did a successful thought exchange, collection of information from 1,000-plus community members and 3,000-plus high school students, and of course, the review of pertinent district quantitative data. If you recall, on November 14th, we were here all together, shared with the Board and the community, that we had come to the word "shines" as kind of our key word for our multi-year vision, and we then promised you that our next work would be involved in identifying those key pillar statements that would fall within each one of the S-H-I-N-E-S categories, which we're happy to share with you today. Then we also took the step that the Board and Jim had recommended, which was to form a community committee, which each Board member provided us a few names, as well as a few names that I added to the committee, and I'm pleased to announce that on February 9th, this community committee came together in person, as the Board had requested. We were able to show them our original draft of what we are calling SBCUSD "Shines 2030", and shared with them the pillar statements beneath each one. We received their feedback, and mostly validation, which was a great indicator that we were on the right step. So today, we're asking the Board now to review our product, our format, and the design that we have put together, and this will be your opportunity today to let us know, are we on the right track? Or any other ideas, suggestions, or recommendation that you would like to give us today, so that Cabinet and I can go back and work on it some more. Then we have one more meeting with our community committee to kind of look at the last draft. We said to them, the role that they're serving is kind of like a motion picture. The director always shows a motion picture to a group of people before it gets out to the masses, and so they will have one last time to take a look at any changes that we make, and give us one last scrutiny, and that our hope is that on March 26th, the Board will approve this multi-year vision that would take us to 2030. So a couple of things to leave you with before I turn it over to Jim is, first is, our goal as a Cabinet and as a team was to put together mission statement, core values, and a vision that was going to be easy to read, easy to remember, easy to ambassador, easy for our staff to see their daily impact on the vision, and most importantly, for everyone in our community and beyond our community limits to know exactly the direction that we're going as a district. So you will see today at your desk, you'll see a copy of a mock of what would be the pamphlet. Remember, we're going to put something together like this, but you're kind of just seeing it on paper format, so we'll get a chance to take a look at that. You're going to see the operating values, and then Jim today will kind of walk us through each one of those components. So please feel free to, this is an interactive process, so at any time you have questions, suggestions, please let us know, because we'll be taking it down, and with that, I'll turn it over to Jim Delicia.
Okay, thank you, Mauricio. Great to be back with you this time in person, which is always nice, yay. And I'm very excited to share the work that we've got, we've done so far with you. It's as coming into the district and having a chance to work with all of the team internally, and then your community, I have to say, there's, what I encountered was an incredible energy, excitement. It was almost like the turning of a page, or a new chapter, a sense of real commitment to taking what you have and growing it and putting it out there. So it was just a pleasure to work with a group of folks in the community and within the district that were incredibly committed and ready to move forward. So you do have a couple of things in front of you. You've got a copy of the slides that I have, but also very quickly, the slides will connect with the draft, and so I'll kind of guide you on shuffling your papers a little bit. But I did want to share a little bit about the product, a few things about the product that we're producing, so you have a sense of how it's structured and its use. So if you look at the draft "Shines" document, it will serve a number of purposes, and we can get into sort of how it will be used, but in essence, it is a very fundamental set of statements which describes really the identity of the district, answers very important questions, you know, who are we? What is our core purpose? What is the essential value that we provide those we serve? Where are we going? What does the district look like as we strive to achieve a certain level of performance? What do we stand for? I think an important part of any school district or any organization that serves the community is to be able to articulate what you believe in, and what you stand for, what are the principles by which you operate, and this piece and pieces you'll see go into that. And then finally, what results are we driving toward by 2030, so that there's a tangible nature to this. It isn't just a lofty statement, but it's a statement wrapped around some action and some outcomes that we're shooting for. So I think it's a, it's a great combination in that regard. So why don't we start with the mission? A mission obviously conveys, I like to say, our mission is our why. It's the essential reason we are here, and providing essential value to those we serve. And it is a notoriously difficult statement to draft for a number of reasons. One, it's got to be concise and hopefully memorable, so in a very few number of words, you have to convey some powerful concepts, and it must resonate with a wide variety of audiences. A mission is probably the most visible piece you're going to put out there to members of the public, to the business community, to the nonprofit community, to the religious community, and to people who don't even live here yet, and are interested in finding out about the community and the school district. And so it has to read and appeal to a very, very wide group of audiences. And finally, in my perspective, it should be aspirational, but it also should be inspirational. It's got to have that feeling when you, when you read it. And so, here is the work, oh, one more thing. As Mauricio said, this was a process that reached very wide and very deep to try to get the feelings, the thoughts, the perspectives of all of your various stakeholders. And so on the slide that you see on the screen now is really a summary of sort of some important concepts of what we heard from these groups that would inform a mission statement. And we heard four very repetitive things as we talked to a wide variety of audiences. One is, it was the concept of that we're investing in our students' potential, and that concept of investment, that it has a deepness to it, it has a payoff to it that is far exceeds the time that they're with us. The second concept goes with that, is that the impact we make on those we serve stretches very, very far beyond the time that they're, they're in school. Two other concepts, we heard that this is, this is a whole child impact. It's, we prepare our students for, to succeed in life, we prepare them physically, health-wise, we prepare them mentally, socially, emotionally, and intellectually. That was a very important concept. And the other one, for sure, was that it isn't a body of students, it's a body of students made up of unique individuals that have unique dreams and interests and potential. And so, how do you put all of that into a very few words and have it convey and appeal to a wide variety of audience? And so here's where we are with that. So the mission of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, "Each child has the skills, resilience, and determination to create their path and thrive in school, career, and life." That is, that is where we are with the statement. We feel, we feel good about that statement as reflective of the feedback we heard, and reflective of the broad impact you actually do have on the students. So, "Each student has the skills, resilience, and determination to create their path and thrive in school, career, and life."
And Jim, and I want to interject a couple of things. So our committee, our community committee, as well as Cabinet, two words that really were heard over and over and over again was resilience and thrive. Those were two big key words that both Cabinet and our community committee really focused on. And the third element was this idea of, our mission statement shouldn't just capture kids until 12th grade, that our mission is to prepare them after they leave the school district, which I thought was a wonderful concept, right? Because many times, mission statements in the school district are confined to their time with us. What we're trying to do is build people beyond their time with us, so that our community prospers together. So the word "career and life" was important.
Yeah, very much so.
So let me ask the question, because you know how real practical. Are you saying that we're going to help to ensure each student has the skills, resilience, and determination? Because it's obvious, all the schools, all the students right now may not have the skills and resilience.
Right.
So what is the statement saying? Is the statement saying, we're here to help accommodate that, or ensure it happens, or...
Thank you for the question, President Tillman. So yes, so the whole focus, we're talking about the whole child. You know, we're investing a lot in this district, and not only just the academics, but also socio-emotional health, we're talking about financial readiness when they get older, how to deal with, how to confront obstacles in social life. So yes, all of those elements are components that our community has said is important, which is why during the thought exchange and during the one-on-one meetings, one of the reoccurring themes that came up was making sure that we continue to have family engagement, that we continue to have emotional support mechanism tools and strategies for our kids, and just the tools to succeed in life. So yes.
So I guess my point is, we would make, want to make it clarified, saying that our mission to create an environment to ensure that each student has the skills, resilience, and...
Yeah. The, yes, it is, at the, at the level of a mission statement, it is very much the sense that everything we do should result in this potential outcome. It's interesting.
And I know, I'm just saying, I'm confused by it, just for, if I'm just coming in and reading the statement, it doesn't make sense to me, because...
I can tell you what the feedback we got. We had originally, the mission of San Bernardino City Unified School is to ensure that.
Exactly.
Right? And the feedback that we got, which is fine, and the feedback we got from the community was, that is too wordy, too long, and we need to be more demonstrative about it. In other words, if we say, "The mission statement is that each student boom." And so we took, we took a stab at shortening it, at trying to make it a little more demonstrative, but the original statement we brought to the community was something along the lines of, "Ensure or strive to, to create this outcome."
I think you have to have that in it. The statement standing by itself doesn't talk about what our role is. If I read this, it's saying that the district is declaring that each student has the skills, resilience, and determination to create their own path. I think it's our, our job to make sure, to facilitate that they do have the skills, resilience, and determination. We want to be there to accommodate that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Got it noted. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Be it Ms. Husky, and then Ms. Medina.
Yes, my question was along the same, and I think it should just start with "to ensure." I agree with you on that, because that then, it doesn't make it wordy, it doesn't put all that other stuff, but then it says what our role is, because I had that same challenge with it, although I love this. I had been part of a group that was looking at our vision and mission a couple of years ago, when we were, started to do this, and this is really where the students in our group, and a lot of us wanted to get to, and so I'm, I'm a fan of this, but I do think it needs the "to ensure."
Appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Medina?
Yeah, and so, I actually read it differently, I guess, different perspectives of the way they read it. For me, I just saw this more as a statement of the child versus what are we doing, or how are they going to accomplish that? So I think that to ensure us, to ensure that we help support them, because I was wondering, well, who's the who? Because we have the students, and sometimes our students, you know, they create their path, but you know, sometimes the path that they're creating is coming from an environment that's not necessarily the best environment to, to build at. And so, I think that's where the who is, is very important, and that's us, as a district, and the employees, and everyone's going to help with that. So I do agree with that, that change. I actually like the bullet points, you know, if there's a way that even if we, the page before it, if we have that as maybe an addition to, like maybe you have the statement, and then the bullet points are really good to show how, you know, this is, yeah, so that bullet point area. So I actually thought this was a really good statement. I know it's in bullet points, my mind reads more things in bullet points versus in, in other ways, but both are really good, except for that adjustment.
Great, thank you. The other thing I think you'll see is that these concepts, you'll see them woven through the other statements as well, so it kind of tells a full story. The mission statement should stand alone, for sure, but when you read the statements collectively, they're going to tell that story. Yeah.
Hi, just may add, and again, perspectives, right? For me, it was, as a, it's pretty clear, I wouldn't mind adding the "ensure" part, the two words, but just mission statement in its, in itself is basically the purpose, right? So it's kind of, I don't know, a little bit redundant, but for clarity purposes, I wouldn't mind the two words. I like the short and sweet.
Appreciate that. Thanks for the feedback, everyone. Perfect.
Okay, great, great. Thank you for that. You get so close to something, it's nice to kind of hear a fresh read, right? Okay, so as Mauricio shared with you, the second, the next part of the document then is really the vision, and honestly, it's kind of our promise for 2030, and it's organized around four, or six pillars in the SHINE structure, and those pillars are all important areas of performance that the district needs to do well in if that mission statement is actually going to be achieved. And so the construct is really clean and, and, and nice there. So, the slides now revert to the actual draft of the, the piece, the mock-up. So you can see the cover, "Shines 2030." You can see then, the inside cover would be the mission statement, the SHINES acronym, the pillars, and then there's a page for each of those letters.
Let me stop you there.
Yeah, please.
For those of you that walked in a little bit, remember, we're going to be putting together a pamphlet, so each one of these pages represent a page of this little booklet, just so it makes sense, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Exactly. Okay. So, the statements underneath each of the pillars reflect outcomes that are important to achieve by 2030 in order for, again, the district to progress. And these were born from a lot of research and input about what were the areas for change and improvement, what were the issues that we needed to tackle, and these statements then were sort of outcomes of that thinking and that input. So, let me kind of tee up this set of statements under SBCUSD "Strong." These set of statements really recap all the components that must be strong in order for San Bernardino to be strong. And so the components that each of these statements relate to are, obviously, our students have to be strong, our family units have to be strong, our district has to be strong, and ultimately, the community. So these are sort of banner statements that all talk about necessary strength for the, for San Bernardino and the district to be strong. So that's what we've got on these five.
Yep. So just so the Board member, Board knows, we originally had the SBCUSD "Strong" part as the last S, and our Cabinet and our community group felt that that should be the first one, and I agreed. I think I stood up and I said, when people ask me, "Are you from San Bernardino?", my answer is, "You damn right, I'm from San Bernardino." Pride. Pride was a big term that our community wanted, so the suggestion was to move the SB, SB "Strong" portion to the beginning, set the tone that we are proud to be San Bernardino, we're going to build pride in this district and the city, and then this is how we're going to do it. So it got moved up to the front.
Exactly. Unfortunately, the acronym has an S at the end and the beginning, so that was quite easy to do. But here are the five statements, you can obviously read them, and we want to take comments on, on any of them.
So I think that's great. I just have a question, though, it's more, just, do we double check this, make sure that this is, we can use SB, SB "Strong"?
We went with SBCUSD "Strong," because our district...
Well, I think, I think her question is, you're just saying, from a perspective of ownership.
Right.
I think it's unique by saying SBCUSD, though. Everybody uses "Strong."
Right, exactly. I just want to make sure that we, sure that even like, even if we display it, make sure it's not a trademark.
It's not.
Okay.
Everybody uses, wherever something bad happens, they use "Strong."
I know they do.
So we're SBCUSD, I don't, is anybody else using SBCUSD?
No, that part's fine.
But they are using San Bernardino.
You're talking about the image that's in the...
Yes.
Yeah, Mayra, you want to speak to the image, and the origins of that image?
This is, I believe, after that tragedy, our students performed, so these...
Well, this is not our image, you're just showing a copy.
Okay.
These are our students, so it is our image.
Got you, okay.
Okay, just making sure.
Good point. Yeah, and we were very conscientious and intentional that all the pictures that are going to be a part of our pamphlet are going to be our students, not stock pictures, so I appreciate the question.
And I think maybe Mrs. Alexander's point is, instead of having, this is really our design work in this picture, are we going to have signs that say SBCUSD "Strong"?
Yeah.
Then it'll be unique to ourselves. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, along that line, if, if it is that we want to include Highland, then we say that, and then we immediately exclude them in the, the top picture, so people are going to still hear SB "Strong," and not SBCUSD "Strong." Even though I know that's a very pivotal moment in our history, I think that should, you know, the students could still be there, but we might want to change that to SBCUSD "Strong" instead of that as a global...
Right, I agree.
Thank you. Good suggestion.
Statements, comments, and any comments about the statements, or we'll, we'll move to H. "High expectations for academics and innovation to be college and career ready." So these statements as a set, the intent is, is to convey the commitment to academics, and the means to showcase for students all the opportunities they have to discover their path and thrive. So it's a, it's a connection back to the mission of path and thrive, but it focuses on all of those ways that we strengthen academic proficiency and expose our students to pathways, and, and make them career-ready.
And just a question, not meaning to get too technical, but when you say proficiency, do you mean from the perspective of the test scores?
Yes.
And, and you say "all," because I know we have some students who, they're never going to be proficient in these areas you're talking about, only because of some of the extenuating circumstances that they're, I mean, Ms. Grande worked at Anderson, there are students that are not going to be proficient in reading, math, and writing, right, Ms. Grande?
Yes, but we always have...
But the statement says, "All students consistently meet benchmarks for academic..."
That's her aspiration.
I, I really, you know, I guess what the part that concerns me is, I mean, it's great, you, and I love the fact that, you know, you did the 50, 50, 90, but I hate to lose sight of the fact that we have students in our district that we give a lot of benefit to, but you, you never can measure it based on being proficient in reading, writing, and math. And now the times, I know you worked at Anderson, but the times I visited there, and they may have students that came out for the Special Olympics, or whatever, but their parents there just enjoy the love that we gave their students, and it, and some of the students were non-verbal, many of them, but we are providing an educational service to those students, that the students and their parents love, but it has nothing to do with whether or not they're going to, you know, be proficient.
It's still been a surprise to know that we...
Okay.
We have a, we have a I U T, right?
I'll go along with that, okay? I'm fine with it, okay? Ms. Husky, then I'm going to have Ms. Medina, and then Ms. Abios.
Two things on that, you know, we're, we're saying 50, 50, 95, and 50 isn't all. So I think, I mean, I know that that's what we want, I mean, ideally, we would have 100% of students meeting the benchmark, but I think our, our goal should match our goal. So as we're students, so that's, I mean, we're still saying that students are consistently meeting their benchmarks, and that's what we want. That's my first thing, and the second thing is, is everything else is positively framed until you get to the attendance goal at the very end, and there's actually, thank you, Marlene, barriers, myths, and aversions that are, that are reasons for students not attending. So I would like to have that statement be a positive statement, instead of a negative statement, because everything else is a positive statement. So, you know, attendance, you know, daily attendance is encouraged, or, you know, you know, children are in school every day, you know, something that's a positive statement, because it's the only one that's not a positive.
Thank you. That's a good observation, thank you. And just going back to the 50, 50, 95, remember, that's a short-term goal, because we want to continue to build, but I also understand the comments made, you know, we'll, we'll work on maybe a little different wording for that first one, but I think I captured the grasp of where everybody's at.
Well, because I'm okay with, see, the thing is, I'm okay with the word "all" in it, because at the end of the day, had, you know, as an example, one of my children, you know, had a lot of, were struggling, and might have not been that percentage of "all," but yet, had he not been pushed and, you know, to the area. So I think for me, it's a positive way of thinking about how you want to have every student thrive, so it doesn't bother me, the word "all," because had not been for, you know, really pushing all of my children, it, it, that you're going to, you're, you're going to be the best as you can. And I, I know it says academic proficiency in reading, writing, and math, and maybe they might not necessarily be in, in reading, but will excel in math, you know, there's, you know, students have different capabilities that can still be reached, and I just wouldn't want to remove the word "all," because then we do, really don't know, we, you know, which ones will, which ones weren't, will not. And even those that have certain different abilities may still excel in one of these areas, and I wouldn't want to hinder that.
Thank you. Ms. Abios?
Thank you. For me, actually, I don't mind the word "all," I prefer it, as a matter of fact, and that's not to say that all students are going to, you know, we are realistic, right? That, you know, some students, you know, because of their disability, or because of home environments, you know, whatever the case may be, may not, you know, perform at that, at that level, but that doesn't mean that we should stop trying, and we should, you know, we shouldn't push as much as we can to make sure that they do excel. We are in the business of educating students, we're in the business of making sure that they do reach proficiency. What kind of proficiency? Amongst other things, but academic proficiency, right? We're making sure that we're, we're preparing them for the world, a world that not always is going to accommodate for them and their needs. And so for me, I highly and strongly support all students. If the benchmarks are the concern, then, you know, maybe in the future, we ought to have a conversation of appropriate benchmarks to utilize, you know, appropriate tools, what that is going to look like. I know that for us, we use... I know that for us, we use STAR and, um, Renaissance and, you know, other type of benchmarks to measure that. If that's not, you know, what we want to utilize, then I think that should be a conversation for the future. But I strongly do support all students.
How about, um, all students consistently strive to meet the benchmarks for academic proficiency?
How do you measure strive though?
We're not talking about measure, we're making a statement because I just don't, I want the state, the statement to be more accurate. When you make the statement of all sis, all students consistently meet benchmarks for academic. I guess the, my problem is this. I have a parent come to the board meeting and they say, in your document, you say, all students will consistently meet benchmarks for academic proficiency. And if the benchmark for proficiency is to be proficient or advanced and we're not doing it, then we're never going to be performing at the level we're supposed to be performing at. And I think we should be able to be held accountable by the documents that we've produced. And you're saying here that all students are going to meet the benchmark for proficiency. I just, and, and, you know, I know we have different personality traits. So to some, it doesn't matter, but to some people, what you put on paper is supposed to mean something. And I, I really don't like the, what we've done in the past where we say, all students, all students will meet or exceed on the test. They're not. And we're, at the time, we're so low, I want something that I can hold you accountable for. And you said that, you, you gave us a number. You said the short-term number is 50, 50, 95. That's something that I can say, you told us we're going to do this and we're going to hold you accountable. And then the, the community can hold us accountable. We make statements that we don't really believe are, uh, factual and we're doing it for a philosophical reason. I think it causes confusion. But I'm just one person, that is my, I can live with it either way. I'm just telling you from my perspective, I just like the stuff to mean something.
That, those are all very valid points, President Tillman and everyone who, so we'll, we'll take back some suggestions. Cause maybe the, the comment or the, um, you can still have a statement that has high expectations, but you have something that says progressing towards, right? Cause I think President Tillman is correct is when you put something on paper is because you're serious, right? And so we want to make sure that the verbiage matches exactly the intent of what we're trying to do. So we'll work on some sort of language that maybe doesn't use the word all, but it talks about all kids progressing towards, right? Cause that's.
We have Ms. Alexander and then Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with what we just shared. It just seems like it's a statement here, but there's no action behind it. Like what are we trying to inspire here? So going back to the statement aspire to inspire. Uh, it seems like we just put on here, for example, students access A through G courses, dual enrollment courses and advanced placement courses and increasing numbers. What are we trying to do here? Like if it's a high expectation, how do we do that? How do we ensure it?
So let me remind the board that once the vision, so the vision is an overarching expectation. Cabinet and I will be working on the action plan that actually creates the metrics and when we're going to measure those metrics along the way. So that will be the, the more precise, uh, aspect of this, of this multi-year vision.
Right. And I understand that, but I think even with the statement, so the first statement, all students consistently meet. That even though I, I know we were going to probably redefine it or make it a little bit more concrete. This one just seems like it's a sentence, but it's not really saying what we're trying to do. Allowing students access to A to, A through G courses or ensuring students have access. That's, I think, would make it a little bit more concrete.
And, and we probably put the quantitative piece at the end where it says in increasing numbers. So perhaps we need to front load that somehow. So, yeah. Thank you for that feedback.
And then Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, President Tillman. I was just going to agree with your comment earlier about when we say all students meet. That does set us up definitely. If somebody were to come in and say that my son or daughter did not meet, uh, the benchmarks. But I want to look at the rest a little bit more. I know I got you a little bit late, so, but thank you. Just wanted to add that piece.
Ms. Medina?
Um, yes, with regards to the access, um, so many years ago, um, I, I'd say maybe about six years ago, our district was only looking at access, which for me was an issue because then, well, they wanted to show the percentage of students enrolled within the A through G's as an example. Um, one, one thing is to have them enrolled, but one, another thing is to have them successfully completed. And so, um, I, I agree when you're looking at access, it's not necessarily just access. It's, it's what the outcomes would be. Um, and, and now we're looking at, in our district is, um, you know, what are the outcomes of it? And that would be, um, how many percent, how many students are actually meeting versus accessing?
All right, let's go to the I. Our slide's going to. Yeah, excellent feedback. So, uh, this was in a very important, another key theme from the research and the input received. And that basically is, simply put, the district doesn't do any of this alone. Uh, so partnerships with parents, families, the community and, and frankly, with the students themselves, where all are accountable for success. And so here we have a set of statements that sort of broadly defines where the district, where and how the district works with others in partnership to accomplish these, uh, student outcomes. Uh, and again, five statements which articulate, um, with whom and, and what we're striving to do in, uh, in working with others to, for student accomplishment.
On the strong partnerships, because it's a list, but I, there's like a lot of others. Um, we just have the elected officials, but like, you know, we've had partnerships with, um, a variety of other, city, county personnel, um, Cal Fire, City Police.
Now, if you can look at consent, when you look at consent, you have a whole list if you want to include all of them.
Right, that's, that's what I'm like.
So you at least add dot, 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 dot.
That's my issue is it's like, this is with, is with the, the list. I mean, I get it. I don't know if there's another way to word it that, but it's.
Maybe an inclusive statement at the end that.
Yeah, some things, right. That's, because I think this is all good. I don't have a problem with anything that's on here, right? But I think there's more folks who have been invested in our, in our city, or, I mean, in our school district that aren't listed.
So.
Uh, you know.
Among others.
Right, because there are like city officials or, you know, county officials who aren't elected, who are investing time.
We'll find the words and make it the dot, dot, dot. That's a good point. Thank you.
Ms. Grande.
I want to also add to that, like, for example, today, I just heard Scott Nelson at the Symphony Guild talk about the partnerships that we have with our students here. That's incredible, um, with all the children touching and getting to know instruments and music by third grade. And, and other partnerships and, um, but the music and the fine arts that are coming, those, those are going to be huge partnerships that we have out there in the community. I don't want to miss that.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Onto the N.
I, I will say, just so that, um, it, it, we can put it everywhere in this document. You know, for something like that, technology could help. Because when we put this online, you could actually have a hyperlink that lists all of the organizations that we partner with.
That's a great idea.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm going to make a note of that. hyperlink. Changing that, yeah.
Yeah, if you're going to put it on paper, you could put a barcode there where you scan it and see all the agencies that work with us. Cause it truly is impressive and we, a lot of people take it for granted.
That's a, that's a great, I love that. It becomes interactive.
There you go.
Listed. Perfect, okay.
Uh, N, uh, N, N, N. So again, we know our students, in order for our students to learn and thrive, we need to focus on those supports that really underpin their ability to learn and reach the desired level of academic proficiency. And so we needed a set of statements which showcased our aspirations and our goals to provide those necessary supports so that our students can learn. And so these statements treat various goals related to that.
Ms. Alexander?
Just one clarification question. So are we talking about, for the last bullet point, we're talking about our pathways where we have focused on wellness and enrichment opportunities? Or is it something else that we're referencing? Yes.
The last bullet? That was in reference, uh, in particular to our EXL programs.
Okay.
Uh, extending the, uh, the school day, the school experience, which.
What letter are you on?
N.
The last bullet under N.
Okay.
Yeah. So that was the highlight, a lot of the information that you heard at the last board meeting.
Okay.
Where we support kids beyond the school day, both academics, wellness, et cetera. Yeah.
I was just wondering because some of the pathways, should we reference maybe our pathways in here too somehow?
It actually is on, um.
I think it's out earlier, but I found it in.
It is earlier. It's on the high expectations, H.
I saw it there.
And the paid internships.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Husky?
Um, I just find the first bullet a little awkward because it's like nutritious student meals and athletic programs. So it's like nutrition and athletic programs. Cause it's more than just the meals supporting the healthy lifestyle, right? Cause we're going to teach, I mean, it's very passive that we just give them a good lunch. Or breakfast. So I'm just like, do you know what I mean? Like it's like.
It is more than that.
Yeah, it's more than that. So you have, it's like, we're going to feed you a good lunch and then, you know, you, you might want to be on the football team.
So maybe break it up into two, because as you see, bullet number three speaks to the emotional health and self-regulation, so.
Right, but I was thinking more, I mean, you're talking about healthy lifestyle in terms of, you know, being active and what you put in your body, right?
Yeah, correct, right.
But it's like the athletic programs are more about teaching that healthy lifestyle. But the meals isn't about the teaching. Giving them a meal isn't about teaching them a healthy lifestyle. So if like the, that's why I'm like, you know, nutrition, you know, however you do that. I mean, it is important that we give, that we're trying, you know.
Right.
Tasty and healthy meals are important, but, um, but, you know, I just think if we're doing, supporting the healthy lifestyle, there's more to it.
Okay, I get.
They have another bullet, the one below, a focus on wellness at all schools promotes self-regul, regular.
Wait, but that's more mental health? That's more, I see that as more of the mental health, mental and emotional health, right? As the other is more about your physical well-being. The first one's physical, the other is the emotional mental. So however that we do the physical well-being in that first.
I, I, I agree. I think it's too limiting. I mean, even when you think about the role that our nurses play.
Yeah.
They do all kinds of stuff during their day to, other than just, like you said, uh, too specific. Right.
Yeah, it's, it's a good, I mean, I like the physical health bullet. And I think that's important that we do that, that we encourage, you know, that. Cause you'll, you'll live a lot longer with that. But, um, I think it's also important, especially with like our food deserts and stuff. They need to understand that, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I want to just give you context of how that bullet came to be. And maybe we didn't capture the essence of it, so I appreciate the feedback. The two biggest pieces of feedback from our high school students, you remember, 3,000 of our high school students participated. One was restrooms, so we've been dealing with that already. We didn't need a vision statement to make sure our rest, and you've seen my memo for the restrooms. But it was the, the students' desire to really have, uh, better quality, better assortment of foods. And they also stated, you know, please keep our sports programs and all these extracurricular activities. So we wanted to honor our high school students and prominently display that there as the first bullet. So maybe we didn't capture it correctly. So, um, having said that.
Yeah.
You know, maybe, give me a suggestion, like, how would you have worded it? Just so I kind of have an idea of where to take it from here.
I have one.
Please.
Support a healthy lifestyle through nutritious student meals and athletic programs. So I, I like what it says, I just think you need to play with the.
I really think it basically two different sentences.
You do?
I, I think it, I think it, I mean, we're totally trying to talk about that physical healthy lifestyle. A physical healthy lifestyle. So I think, I think it's, it, I think the nutritious student meals, the fact that we're going to give them meals because we're feeding breakfast and lunch for all students, I think is important that it's in here. But I also think that it's beyond that, that we're going to teach the nutrition, right? So it might be, you know, um, you know, support the healthy lifestyle through nutrition, you know, acad, uh, nutrition.
And exercise.
Well, nutrition and exercise.
Nutrition and exercise.
To provide it, yeah. I mean, it's, because it's not, it's more than giving them the meal. Like we're also teaching them to eat well.
Assuming Ms. Alexander, then Ms. Medina?
I guess I'm still not clear on what we're trying to accomplish with this section. Are we looking at the holistic part? I know I heard you say in terms of the high school students, but are we looking at, um, the whole student? Are we looking at the athletes? Cause there are also challenges with athletes as well? Or is it focused just on the students?
It's focused on the.
The scholars.
It's focused on students in general.
Okay.
And it was important for our community, that was a big topic of wellness. And so we wanted to capture, uh, the whole picture of wellness within this end part.
We're doing all this, looking at context or fitting everything aside the word shine.
Good point.
But to clarify, that was my asking is because we have athletic programs support a healthy lifestyle.
Right, so the trick is to try to make sure we mention all the things we really want in here.
Right.
Cause the strategic plan has been a big part of this district culture for years. And that's another item that our community wants to continue is our focus on the strategic plan. So we try to capture, as President Tillman said, as much as we can within a limited amount of words.
And, and honestly, and my, I, I really do agree with Ms. Ms. Angrande, what she, how she reframed it. Because when you look at, I, I think of it differently, of a healthy lifestyle when it comes to the physical aspect is both nutrition and physical.
Right.
So I, I wouldn't want to necessarily separate it, uh, maybe better, better wordsmith it.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
But, um, I think they go hand in hand now athletic programs. Maybe it could be worded differently versus.
They need to be separate sentences.
Yeah, I think that, I mean.
Trying to lump it together doesn't work.
But unless you separate athletic programs in a separate one. But when you do the, when you add the healthy, you know, the nutrition, uh, meals, student meals, I think that still incorporates some physical.
You can, but it could be a separate sentence.
Yeah. I, and can we add physical at the top? So it's nutrition, wellness, physical and mental health?
That's a good point.
I think, I think that needs to be up there, because I think it's important.
All right, E. Dance the slides here, E. All right, so for E, the set of statements we're attempting here to celebrate, obviously, the richness of the community as an asset and ensuring that each student feels a sense of belonging and has equal access to what the district has to offer. And so you'll see the series of E statements there.
The, the funding we have set aside for the, um, lowest achieving schools, was it 10% of the schools or 5%?
Well, I used 10% because as, as you remember in the email, I also have captured comments that the board has made over the timeframe. And, uh, I believe what's been thrown out is they wanted the superintendent to focus on our bottom 10%. Now, the funding, I don't know if they, is it the bottom 5% or, for CSI, it's 5%, correct?
But I just, same thing though, if we're going to say. They said, you're saying here that the lowest achieving 10% of schools are uniquely funded. So as long as you're telling me that you're going to add some money to 10% of the schools and not 5%. Cause I don't want somebody to come to me and say, you have this statement about 10%. What are you doing extra at?
Take out the percent.
And show me the list.
It doesn't have to be a percentage. Right, so the lowest achieving schools are uniquely funded.
Well, that's my point. My point is right here, you have 10%. And I will tell you, in the past, the 5% came from when they initially did No Child Left Behind.
Right.
And for some reason, the state always focused on the 5% of low performing schools. They still do.
Yeah.
And you could easily wake up in the morning, it'd be a, a story on CNN about the 5% of low performing schools. A district is always going to have 5% of its schools that are lowest.
Right.
Performing, 5% in your district. So make sure you're doing something at those schools so that you're never going to have those same schools sitting there.
Yeah, and again, I just want to remind the board, the 10% came from when we requested feedback from the board about top 10 priorities. 10% was used as a number, but we can certainly use 5%.
No, we could do 10. We have to make sure you put money towards the 10 though.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Sabios?
Um, I, I have a question on the second bullet. It says African-American student learning gaps are closed. So what does that mean exactly? Because when we talk about learning gaps, we can argue that there's learning gaps across the board for every, you know, different, um, race, right? And so what does that specifically mean for African-American students? And then what statement here will address other ethnic groups as well?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. So that bullet was intended to reflect the board policy for the African-American student. So that bullet was intended to reflect the board policy for the African-American student achievement. It was done in 2007, we've talked about that a few times. And that was a very important, that came out a lot in our community discussions about that board policy being in place since 2007. So there was a, a feeling of there needing to be intentionality. And I didn't wanna use board policy 61, it, it just seemed so impersonal. So we, we decided to identify the bullet by using African-American students, but it's to reflect the board policy that was put in place in 2007. That doesn't stop our responsibility of dealing with all other gaps, but that one was intentional because of the board policy.
And if I, if I can just follow up, so then, when you talk about learning gaps, like, you know, what are specific metrics on that? Like, you know, because district-wide, you have 50/50/95. So now if we're adding a specific bullet point, you know, to make sure that we target African-American students, do we have a separate metric specifically to, for accountability purposes, right?
Yes, so the answer is yes. So I've met with Anna Applegate, our Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, and Dr. Will Greer. So one of the charges that I've given them is to look at the board policy, because the board policy is pretty clear about the different components that the board wished for there to be improvement. So I've asked them to put together a proposed series of metrics that match all of the elements of the board policy. So I've not seen those yet, we're scheduled to meet, I believe, next week or the week after. And we'll decide, I'll decide if those metrics are appropriate, but yes, to answer your question, there will be metrics that will be followed that address specifically the components that are listed in the board policy.
Mr. Husky, and then Dr. Wyatt?
I, um, I believe that, I mean, the achievement gap for African-American students, particularly in our district, is, is a crisis, and that we need to deal with it. In terms of this, I sort of also found this awkward, what if we did student, student learning gaps are closed with a focus on African-American students? So that we know that that's still our focus, but we're, we have other gaps, socioeconomic. You know, we know low SES has issues, we know special education has issues, we know foster homeless has issues. So, you know, making it so that we're really, we know that we're looking at the learning gap, because that's part of our 50/50 goal, is we wanna target those learning gaps that we're having, but we know that, by board policy, we have an extra special focus on our African-American students because of the crisis that we have there.
And not just on board policy, if you look at the recent results of the test scores.
Right, exactly.
It's still, it's still cause for concern, huge.
Agreed, that's kind of my point with the focus there. But I think we need to, I think we need to, I think we need to hold ourselves accountable for holding, for looking at our student learning gaps across the board, but that's our focus.
I think it was Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a little quick question for clarification on our board policy regarding student achievement, African-American student achievement. Does, is there language in there discussing learning gaps? I'm just wondering where we came up from the language here.
The board policy doesn't use the word "learning gap."
Okay.
The learning gap is just a term we use, because they have been the student group that has performed the lowest. I believe it's special education students as well, historically, over at least 20 years of standardized testing. So learning gap is more of an internal word.
The term was targeted instruction, right?
Targeted instruction, correct.
And the reason why I ask is, because, you know, I'm thinking we can put a more positive spin on this, rather than using the term "learning gap." Maybe African-American students continue to improve, continue to increase, continue to be a top priority, but I would recommend getting away from "learning gap."
Okay, appreciate that.
You can use the term targeted instruction.
Targeted, I mean, if that's what the, that's why I asked, Mr. President, what the board policy said, maybe we can align it more with what it says. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Alexander?
Thank you. I have a question related to the last bullet point, inclusive excellence and a high level of customer service is a standard across the district. Are we, what are we saying here in terms of our teachers? Are we including them in customer service, or what does that mean?
This would be inclusive of everyone in the district, that everyone in the district would exercise good customer service, and that inclusive excellence is how we do work in this district, that no one is made to feel inferior or not welcomed or differentiated in a negative way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mrs. Grande?
Uh, I've been looking for a way to promote kindness as a value in our district for a long, long time. And all of these are very wonderful, resilience, thrive, just wonderful, and then, but the thing is, is that, you know, even the, the one point that offers dignity, unless kindness is actually spoken, it can be, it can be a value, yes, but there's many ways to show kindness. It could be through silent communication, it could be through actions, it could be body language. There are a lot of ways that employees, myself, a teacher, a principal, somebody can feel uncomfortable, not safe. Why? Because people, someone, somewhere, did, said, or indicated the opposite of kindness. And we want our children to feel safe.
Yeah, right there.
We, we see it, customer service, we used to have customer service awards when people walked in, parents and other people. And if our office staff was abrupt, if our office staff with their body language made them feel unimportant, not acknowledged.
Ms. Grande, so what letter do you want the statement for kindness to be under?
On the last one, where it says inclusive excellence and a high level of customer service and kindness is a standard across the district. Maybe it's too far, maybe it's too much, I don't know, but that's where it's under E and equity.
Yeah, my point is, it doesn't have to be under E, though.
Okay, no, no, it doesn't. I've been, I've been searching.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Uh, we're, we're also gonna show you some core values statements, and we found a good place where that would be, you know, but it can exist in both, so we have it noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect place, yeah.
Because it could be under the next letter also, where the last S. Is that everybody on that page? All right, go ahead.
Okay, last S. All right. Yes, so finally, another essential for learning is a safe, secure environment that has all the necessary tools for learning to prepare our kids for the future. And so, again, we're trying in these statements to treat all the various aspects of what safe means, what secure means, what equipped means in the, in the guise of the learning environment and the facilities. And so there's your final set of statements to review.
I think Mrs. Grande wants one that says staff will be trained with the most updated strategy, system, and protocol that promote kindness.
You can put it in two places, I don't care. It fits.
Okay. Any questions on this one? All right.
Okay. So quickly, if you look at the rest of the pages of the document, so you can get a sense of what the booklet will, will be like, and then I'll go to the operating values.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Cabinet, this $1.1 billion, is that the normal budget, or is that including ESAR money? ESAR money? We lower it. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Husky?
On the, on the last one, I apologize, on the S, it, it says all security and safety personnel. Is there a place where, and I can't remember going back in the letters, where the building positive caring relationships with student, staff, and the community, where that's also about the students and the staff and the community? Like, like, I think, I think all three pillars, you know, school, security, and safety personnel are part of our staff, right? So I think all three pillars need to be building positive caring relationships. I don't think that's a one-way issue to building a safe and secure campus. You know what I'm saying?
No, I'm missing your point, sorry.
So, uh, uh, in bullet two, it says all school security and safety personnel are well-trained and respectful, and build positive caring relationships with students, staff, and the community. That's important, but it's also important that students build positive caring relationships with staff and the community. It's also important that the staff build.
Reciprocal, yeah.
Right, so it's, it's, it's more of a triangle than a one-way, right now it's just a one-way arrow, but I, it needs to-
Got it.
It needs to be more of a triangle of, of building positive caring relationships.
Like a rumbler line, yeah.
Yeah, it goes to her kindness piece, that's her kindness.
And that's my point, so you're really saying it shouldn't be limited to school, security, and safety personnel?
Right, and it's important that they're, that they do that, but it's also important that the students do that with each other and with staff and the community.
So would you want it to say all school staff?
Well, we can word it as a reciprocal-
Right, that's, yeah, I'm not, I'm gonna, don't need to word it there, but I wanted to make sure that it's, that it's a triangle, that everybody is doing that with everybody else.
Or you can leave this, but add the other part somewhere else.
Correct.
Right, because there, there's a related part under mental health that gets into that kind of safety and, and respect piece as well, so we'll note that.
It's gotta be both, that whole triangle, right, right.
It's gotta be always.
Students have to be led to that, too.
Right, right, right.
Let everybody's led to be building.
That's a good point.
Yep, excellent.
Thank you.
They don't, they can't be, yeah. Unkind, I don't have to do it, it's not in the, it's not in the book.
Okay, all right. So look at this one pager, operating values.
This one here.
Uh, and let me kind of share with you what this is, and how we intend to look at, look at this. So as a component of, of articulating some foundational statements about who the district is and, and where it's going, is the, is the what do we stand for and what do we believe piece of your identity? And for a school district, as I said, that's an important piece. And so we were thinking about how do we articulate the core operating values of the district? And we're defining that as statements that do, do communicate what we stand for as a district, what we believe in, and how we agree to operate the district, so that both within the district and everybody who experiences the district from the outside has a similar experience based on a set of principles. In a, in a way, some groups call this the culture statement, because these are foundational building blocks of your culture. Uh, and so we approach this by saying, what are the concepts around which we should have statements about what we believe is a district? And so we, from a lot of different brainstorming and sorting, we came up with nine concepts for operating values that we believe the district needs to articulate a statement about beliefs. Uh, and they are human potential, equity, safety, collaboration, professionalism, resilience, innovation, diversity, and pride, which again mirrors a bit of the SHINES construct when you look at the pride piece being so critical in, in the district strong. Uh, so that's what these are.
And just one, and the design of this isn't final, we just threw this on for now, but we haven't created an actual design. We envision these core values being a, a campaign, a poster that is gonna be prominently displayed in our lobbies, at our schools. This is our statement of what we believe is a district, as a board, as a superintendent, as a teacher, as a custodian, as a secretary. These are our beliefs, so we just didn't want you to think this was in final format, this is still in work in progress.
Right. And, and the final point to be made at is, is that most organizations, many, many organizations have a list of concepts. Their values are single words. And we thought, that's way too open to interpretation, you know, when, when you really wanna understand, when we say equity, what do we mean by that? Which could eventually translate into what these look like in behavior and action. Because the statements may sound great, but unless they're translated into actual consistent behavior and action, they don't become your demonstrated operating value. So we definitely didn't want a list of words, we definitely wanted to articulate a statement. And then, as Maurizio said, the go forward with this is to translate these into demonstrative action and behavior that's expected to live these values. So that's what you're looking at.
Yes.
I think this is great, I just have a, it's a point of clarification, or just to bring it to your attention. So collaboration, we have it on here, but then, when I thought we would've used the word collaboration, because words are powerful, we don't have it listed, and that's under I. So just if we're gonna have one document, can we just make sure that in our pamphlet, we have at least this word once or twice somewhere? Under partnership.
The word collaboration, in, in the, in the other document.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Under the partnership section.
Right.
Anyone else? Mr. Husky?
Um, under, under pride, it says San Bernardino will thrive. And I just go back to our first conversation that Ms. Alexander brought up about, and we talked about San Bernardino and Highland, either it should be, you know, SBC USD will thrive, or San Bernardino, Flat Highland will thrive.
Or, and communities.
Or, or take pride in their-
All school district communities, or-
It says take pride in their community, San Bernardino will thrive, so, um, I don't know.
Good catch.
I don't know, I just wanna make it consistent with our-
But I, I do like the fact that when we're listing out, because I honestly believe, and I mentioned this before, that our district is what's gonna be the, the thriving force of the city of San Bernardino. Literally, we're, we're the answer to a lot of the issues. And so I, I, you know, if we can use something referencing the, you know, maybe cities or within the city, I don't know. I'm sure you're gonna find someone that's gonna help wordsmith that correctly, but I do like, I do like that. I do like that, that we are looking at, you know, being the ones such as-
Which was the genesis of that statement, being that impetus and strengthening those units which are gonna make San Bernardino-
I was just more about making it consistent, because we talked in the beginning about wanting SBC USD, not SB, because we have the city, we have county, and, and we have the city of Highland, so-
Yeah.
Uh, you know, being consistent with-
Right.
With the two, but I agree, I, I mean, I agree with that statement 100%, I just think we need to be consistent with our-
Yeah, we need to be more inclusive of the areas. And Muskoye is also part of-
Muskoye, yeah, we, that we represent. And, and, uh, Northern, um, Dvor, you know, so we have lots of areas that are communities in and of themselves, but- So how do we make this inclusive?
Great. And then the final slide was simply the, where we're gonna go from here. We do, we will take all this feedback and continue to work on this. We do have another community workshop scheduled, which is very exciting. We had over 20, 25 community members there.
Forty people there, yeah.
It was an active, it was a great group.
It was awesome.
Uh, so we've invited them back, and hopefully others, to join us on March 11th, and we'll debut again the piece and ask for any final feedback, and you will see it on March 19th.
So I just wanna thank the members of the Board of Education. I really appreciate your genuine care, feedback, because we wanna get this right. This is gonna be our statement to the community between now and 2030, so thank you for taking this very seriously and putting time in. I wanna thank our community committee, because they were powerful, and they were a good bunch, and very supportive of what we're trying to do. And they too, as, as was mentioned, believe that as the school district goes, the city will follow, so I appreciate that. And I just wanna give a big shout-out to our multimedia team, and Mayor Rowan, your team, for putting together the, the product. And I know you guys are still working on it, man, but it's really looking great, and you guys have been putting a lot of hours into the template, so appreciate you and your team and all your hard work, so.
Mr. Myers?
So just a really quick question, I guess. Will, will we be having another meeting? So for me, this is really important, but I also wanna align this to, like, metrics, right? So when it comes to academics, we have metrics that we use. I was looking at some, and I know we've seen them before, but I think it would be a good idea, or at least I would like to see them again, maybe more synthesized. So like, for instance, that question that I asked, you know, about African-American students and the learning, so I would like to see the goal, I would like to see the metrics that we're gonna be utilizing. And then also, you know, just some examples on that same slide, equity, when we talk about high level of customer service, you know, what are we basing our results on, right? I know that we use the survey, I can't remember.
Panorama, as an example.
But is that the best, you know, tool out there? I don't know, I'd like to see things like maybe, you know, having at every school site, you know, immediate feedback, you know, boxes or, of some sort, you know. So something, I would like to see, hopefully, another meeting where we can attach some of those metrics that we're gonna be utilizing for, if not every single one, you know, at least the overarching. And then just lastly, too, on that first slide, just to go off, just wanna make sure that you captured on that last bullet on SBC USD strong, there is that San Bernardino again. Okay, good. Thank you.
And Mira, thank you for tho- for those comments. So that action plan, Cabinet and I will start working on it, assuming the board approves the final product, which it looks like we're headed in the right direction, so thank you. During the month of April and May, we'll be working to put together that action plan, which you guys will see. So you'll see the different metrics that will be included. A lot of them are metrics that already exist internally, but you just haven't seen them, because Anna and Sandra and her team have been putting together metrics for their departments, so you'll see those and we'll share those with you. Probably a little closer in late May or, or early June, okay? Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, see you later on.
All right, thank you very much, everybody, appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Like to start with the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna ask Ms. Allison Cooley to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. She attends North Park Elementary School. Ms. Cooley?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley, did a great job. That brings us to 2.3, approval of agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Alexander, and second by Ms. Chusky. Vote, please. I'd like to ask student board members, Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Alzama?
Aye.
And Ms. Rojo?
Aye.
And I would like to recognize a long-term past board member, Ms. Linda Savage. Would she please stand? She was here when I first got elected, 29 years ago. I see her husband Phil with her. Good to see you guys tonight. And it's amazing you're still helping us out, Linda, in the community. Let's give Linda Savage a round of applause. Good evening. During the month of February, the district pays tribute and gives recognition and honor of Black History Month. Before we continue with the special recognition portion of our board meeting, I'd like to take a moment to turn the floor to our communications director, Ms. Mary Rowan Goodwin.
Thank you, President Tillman. As he shared, I am the Director of Communications and Community Relations. I'd like to invite our board members and our executive cabinet to make their way to one of the reserved seats below at this time. Tonight, Arroyo Valley High School students will offer a cultural heritage presentation for the board, and the board will recognize the outstanding efforts of our diligent students, parents, and employees, as well as the commitment of our community partner, Assistance League of San Bernardino, for all of the support the organization has provided and the help that they've provided to our students over the years. Following the first presentation, board members will come forward for a photo opportunity and remain standing. As board members make their way forward, I'd like to invite our students with the AVHS School Dance Company, under the direction of dance teacher Diane Bonds, to make their way forward at this time. Audience, please give them a round of applause as they take their positions. Dancing to the song Stand Up from the motion picture Harriet, which is based on the inspirational life of iconic American freedom fighter Harriet Tubman. Her courage, audacity, and tenacity to fight led to the freedom of hundreds of slaves. Her life led to the change of the course of history.
I've been walking with my face turned to the sun. Weight on my shoulders, a bullet in my gun. Oh, I got eyes in the back of my head, just in case I have to run. I do what I can, when I can, while I can, for my people. While the clouds roll back and the stars fill the night, that's when I'm gonna stand up, take my people with me. Together we are going to a brand new home, far across the river. Can you hear freedom calling, calling me to answer? Gonna keep on keeping on, I can feel it in my bones. Stand up, take my people with me. Together we are going to a brand new home, far across the river. Can you hear freedom calling, calling me to answer? Gonna keep on keeping on. I'm gonna stand up, take my people with me. Together we are going to a brand new home, far across the river. I hear freedom calling, calling me to answer? Gonna keep on keeping on, I can feel it in my bones.
Wow, that was truly fantastic. Let's bring them back. Let's, students remain up front, and Ms. Bonds, please join us. Principal Manuel Gonzalez, please join us at the front for a photo. Audience, let's give these students from Arroyo Valley High School one more round of applause for that amazing presentation tonight, celebrating Black History Month in February. Good evening. I'm Communications Manager Maria Garcia, and I will emcee this next segment of our recognition program. In a few moments, the board will honor students, parents, and staff from Lincoln, North Park, Rodriguez Prep, and Arroyo Valley High School. And the board will also show their appreciation to this month's community partner award recipient, the Assistance League of San Bernardino. So, before we move forward, I would like to invite our executive cabinet to take their places. They are already at their place along the ramp to greet tonight's honorees. Thank you, Executive Cabinet. Tonight's community partner award winner will receive a special plaque made by our very own Bing Wong Elementary School students. And thank you once again for joining us this evening to celebrate and recognize the work of the Assistance League. We're so fortunate to have partners like Assistance League respond to the needs of our students. The Assistance League of San Bernardino has had a profound impact on our school community through its dedicated efforts to support children in need. From providing clothing to at-risk students to offering a free dental program, the Assistance League has consistently demonstrated its commitment to enhancing opportunities for the children in San Bernardino and Highland. As you know, many of our past and present Board of Education members have themselves performed at the League's annual fundraiser, the Headdress Ball. So, for their tireless support and unwavering dedication to serving our SBCUSD students, please put your hands together for San Andreas High School Principal Dory Stratten, who serves as Vice President of Resources for the Assistance League. She will accept this award on the Assistance League's behalf and provide brief remarks. Thank you, Dory.
Thank you, Board President Tillman, Vice President Sabios, SBCUSD Board, Superintendent Ariano, and Cabinet. My name is Dory Stratten, and I am the principal of San Andreas High School. But today, I stand before you as the Assistance League of San Bernardino, Vice President of Resource Development. At this time, I would like any current or past members from Assistance League of San Bernardino and Lake Confrere to please join me. Assistance League was chartered in 1947 and was founded to help the students of San Bernardino City Unified School District. We have two main charities for the Assistance League, and that is the Dr. Earl Crane Children's Dental Center. It was established in 1949, and we provide complete professional dental services to children between the age of five to 25 living in San Bernardino and surrounding communities, including Colton, Rialto, Highland, and Muskoye. The children of San Bernardino served by the dental center are from families of every ethnic, religious, and racial background, who do not have dental insurance or are underinsured. Services are provided for a $20 fee per visit. No child is ever turned away if they cannot afford to pay the fee. Operation School Bell, which actually happened today, and Superintendent Ariano had the opportunity to join us, and we really appreciate him being there. It allows children who go to school without adequate clothing, and they often suffer low esteem because of the predicament they're in. Students K through 12 are identified by the San Bernardino City Unified School District, partnering with us, with their personnel, and they bring the students to Operation School Bell. Students get to go shopping, which they did today at Walmart, for brand-new clothing, and are outfitted from head to toe with the assistance of one of our caring members, which often are San Bernardino City Unified School District employees, as well as Assistance League members who give of their time. Often, it's said that the students are so excited, one of the times they even told one of our volunteers, "Do you mean I get my own toothbrush and I don't have to share it with my brother?" So, it is a very needed opportunity for our students to get, you know, get something that a lot of us really do take for granted. Assistance League last year had 480 K-12 students served by Operation School Bell. 850 K-12 students were served by the Dr. Earl Crane Children's Dental Health Center. And 3,383 hours were volunteered by members of the Assistance League. So, today, I just want to thank you for your partnership, and thank the Assistance League members for everything that they do. Thank you.
As they pose for pictures, we would really like to thank Dory for her service to our district, her service to the Assistance League of San Bernardino. So, let's hear it one more time for the Assistance League. Thank you again, Assistance League. And our Board of Education will remain just where they are, because now it's time for our Outstanding Student, Parent, and Employee Awards. The outstanding awards stem from the Board of Education's longstanding desire to honor deserving students in our school district, to build self-esteem, and showcase those who demonstrate excellence in academics, athletics, fine arts, and citizenship. The Board also takes this time to recognize parents, volunteers, and employees who have earned an outstanding award. All of our school-level honorees will receive a certificate of appreciation from our Board of Education, and a certificate from San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. Student and parent award winners will receive free tickets for themselves and their family to the San Bernardino Symphony. And our student honorees will also receive a district bumper sticker and yard sign. These presentations will take about 15 to 20 minutes, and we ask that as a courtesy to our fellow honorees, that you please return to your seats after receiving your award, so you can be there to cheer for those who cheered for you. With that in mind, when your name is called, would you and your immediate family, please come forward to accept your award by walking down the ramp where you see the balloons? You will also have a photo taken with Superintendent Mr. Mauricio Ariano, the Board of Education, and your principal. After pictures, our honorees will exit using the walkway to my right, and yard signs will be available at the end of this segment. Our first school site recognitions are from Lincoln Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Dr. Heather Regalado to join us at the front. Audience, I hope you're ready to clap and cheer, because we're starting with 5th grader Malachi Boyd. And Malachi was nominated by Carol Lizalde and is taught by Eric Brown. Malachi has shown tremendous growth in reading through his consistent perseverance. He now enjoys learning new words and takes pride in his learning. We're so proud of you, Malachi. Oh, yeah, Mr. Eric Brown, come on down for the photo. Do we have Carol Lizalde here? Okay, Carol isn't here, but Mr. Eric Brown is coming forward as Malachi's teacher. I recognize Mr. Eric Brown as a former classified employee in this building, so let's hear it for Eric Brown. And let's keep the cheers and applause going by giving it up for 3rd grader Abraham Lopez Torres. Abraham is a student in Rebecca Corral's dual immersion class. Abraham is an English learner who has worked hard to learn his letter names and sounds in both languages, and is now reading in Spanish and speaking English. Congratulations. Congratulations, Abraham and family. And now for our first, and now for our first Outstanding Parent Award winner, Diana Alvarez. Let's give Diana a round of applause as she comes forward. She has led the work for the Fall Festival and. She has led the work for the Fall Festival and the upcoming Dr. Seuss Literacy Event. We thank Diana for increasing family engagement opportunities at her school. Thank you, Diana. Let's give her a round of applause. And now I invite Senior Recreation Leader Lucila Lucy Garcia to come forward. Lucy is kind to staff, students, and families. She works day in and day out to make sure Lincoln is a safe place for students on the playground and in the cafeteria. She is a great role model for students and staff alike. Thank you, Lucy Garcia. And now, please put your hands together for Counselor Ariseli Rodriguez. She is constantly thinking of ways to engage students and staff in order to grow as a school and a community. She is professional and works well with colleagues. In one short year, she has brought joy to everyone at Lincoln. Congratulations, Ariseli. Let's give them a round of applause, and thank you, audience, for honoring the students and staff from Lincoln Elementary School. Thank you to our Lincoln honorees for returning to your seats. Now let's keep the energy going by giving a big round of applause to North Park Elementary School and Principal Heather Bjornberg. Please make your way down the ramp, and put your hands together as we welcome Samantha Cooley. Samantha is an outstanding student from Tiffany Johnson's third-grade class. Samantha is responsible and excels in reading, writing, and math. She puts her best effort into completing class assignments and shows great attention to detail. Congratulations to Samantha Cooley. Thank you. And now we're going to hear it for sixth-grader Elijah Moore. Elijah is an outstanding student in Tanya Hayman's class. Elijah is a model scholar, a positive role model, and always tries his best. He is usually the first to take the lead in group discussions by contributing and sharing ideas. Congratulations, Elijah. Okay, our next honoree is Administrative Secretary to Darlene Peters. Darlene works collaboratively with colleagues, families, and scholars, strengthening North Park's community and fostering a culture of teamwork and mutual support. Darlene's efforts have led to the successful implementation of various initiatives at North Park. Congratulations, Darlene. And now for Program Facilitator Heidi McQueen. Heidi's professionalism and genuine care and empathy for our community creates a positive and supportive atmosphere that enriches the experiences of all who interact with her. She goes the extra mile to ensure that everyone feels valued. Let's hear it for Heidi McQueen. And thank you to everyone for helping us honor our North Park students and staff. Let's give them another round of applause. And now, it's my pleasure to welcome Rodriguez Prep Academy Principal Kathy Attencio. And let's welcome eighth-grader Alana Jackson. Alana is an outstanding student. Throughout her academic journey, Alana has demonstrated a strong sense of responsibility, compassion, and leadership. Her exceptional academic performance reflects her commitment to excellence. Congratulations, Alana. And now we are going to custodian Juan Letizia Villalpando. Letizia consistently demonstrates pride in her work. Her enthusiasm and passion for upholding our values and fostering a positive learning environment serve as an inspiration to everyone who works with her. Thank you, Letizia, for helping us maintain beautiful campuses. All right, now for outstanding seventh-grade ELA teacher Abigail Tejada. Abigail goes above and beyond to enrich our students' middle-school experience. She stepped up to serve as a cheer coach, and she embodies the school's spirit as the ASB teacher and serving as department lead. Thank you, Abigail. Abigail is joined by other members of the Tejada family, who I believe have contributed numerous teachers to SBCUSD. So thank you to Abigail Tejada and the Tejada family for their commitment to helping us educate our scholars. Congratulations, Abigail. Let's give all of these eagles another round of applause as they soar to academic excellence. And now our final Outstanding Achievement Award school is Arroyo Valley High School. Would Principal Manuel Gonzalez please come forward at this time? As he makes his way, please put your hands together for Brianna Hernandez, a sophomore in the Global Leadership Academy. Brianna actively works toward finding solutions and gaining new knowledge. She is willing to take academic risks and take on leadership positions. Congratulations, Brianna. And now for Yaretzi Medina Hernandez, a senior in the VAPA pathway. Yaretzi actively contributes to a positive and inclusive school environment. She is a dedicated member of the school orchestra and dance team, displaying her versatility and dedication to the arts. Okay, now we're going to honor Yedira Contreras. She is a stellar parent. Her unwavering commitment to her child's education is clearly seen through her active participation in parent meetings at the school and the district level. She fosters a supportive learning environment at home and at Arroyo Valley High School. Thank you, Yedira, for being a stellar parent volunteer. Now we're going to honor Campus Security Officer to Juanita Loyah. Juanita possesses high standards for security protocols, but also goes above and beyond to establish a positive rapport with the students that she helps. Her approachability and genuine concern for students create a sense of trust and security within the Arroyo Valley campus. Let's hear it for Juanita. And now it's time to announce our very final Outstanding Achievement Award honoree for this evening, and that is Linked Learning Program Specialist and CTE Department Chair Dimitri Chronopoulos. Dimitri arrives at work with a smile, radiating positivity that uplifts the entire team. As a great listener, Dimitri ensures that every student and staff member is heard and valued. Thank you, Dimitri. So as we take the final picture, let's give all of our Arroyo Valley Hawks another round of applause. And immediately following the last photo, I thank the members of the Board of Education, Superintendent and Cabinet, and ask that they return to their seats. And thank you to our amazing audience for showing your support for all of our honorees. We send a special thank you to Fifth District San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. and the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra for supporting this evening's honorees. Audience, let's give everyone, let's give our student presenters, our award recipients, another round of applause. And now this concludes this evening's special presentations. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to our Board President, Mr. Tillman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and great job, staff, and congratulations to all the awardees. Let's give them one more round of applause. Ms. Medina.
I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone, but especially the performance, the students that performed, I just have to say, it definitely merits a standing ovation. And they did an amazing job, and it wasn't just the performance of dance, it was also the emotions. If you saw their face and the way, I mean, it was just, I felt like I almost, you know, wanted to, you know, cheer up, because you can feel the emotions that they were going through. So I thought it was beautiful, and I congratulate you to the school and the talent and how they were able to perform it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to 3.3 Resolution and Recognition of Women's History Month, International Women's Day, and because Mrs. Alexander brought out the Assistance League, I'll allow her to read that tonight.
Thank you, President Tillman. Whereas March is Women's History Month, a time dedicated to recognizing and spreading awareness of the importance of women in the history of the United States and worldwide, and whereas March 8th is International Women's Day, a day of collective global activism and celebration, and whereas... and celebration. And whereas women have led efforts to secure equal opportunities for women, the emancipation movement, labor movements, civil rights movements, and other causes to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas in the U.S. Suffragists' March, and were arrested for in supporting women's right to vote and ultimately achieve the enactment of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. And whereas in our own community across the United States and worldwide, women have been and continue to be leaders in the forefront of social change efforts, business, science, government, math, art, literature, music, film, athletics, and more. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins others around the state, the nation, and the world in recognizing March as Women's History Month on March 8th, 2024, as International Women's Day, and directs district teachers to promote learning activities and encourage students to reflect on many notable contributions that women have made.
Moved. Second?
It was moved by Ms. Medina and seconded by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Elzama?
Aye.
And Ms. Rojo?
Aye.
Motion passed. 3.4 Resolution Recognizing March as Arts Education Month. Mr. Husky?
Thank you. Whereas the visual and performing arts have a unique ability to connect us to our history, heritage, and culture. And whereas arts education, which includes dance, media arts, music, theater, and the visual arts, is a vital part of a quality, basic education, providing a balanced education for all students. And whereas the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins California in recognizing arts education as an essential part of basic education for all students, pre-kindergarten through grade 12. And whereas artistic literacy, defined as the ability to understand, create, perform, present, produce, respond, and connect through the arts, is a core part of the arts education framework. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins the California Senate and Assembly in recognizing March as Arts Education Month, and encourages all schools in the district to celebrate the arts with meaningful student activities and programs that demonstrate learning and understanding of the visual and performing arts. So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Husky and seconded by Mrs. Alexander. Vote, please. Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Elzama?
Aye.
And Ms. Rojo?
Aye.
The motion passed. Section 4, 4.1 Receive Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject-matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And our first public comment will come from Joe Salas?
My apologies, President Tillman, Joe Salas. My agenda's items actually on the agenda. It's 10:23.
You want to wait, then? You want to do it now?
Uh, if I could.
You want to wait?
Uh, do it now. Yeah, if possible. Real quick, I just wanted to thank Colleen Williams and Ms. Hedges Mart up at Swiss. The Assistance League was very appropriate, talking about their work for that they do with the mobile dental clinic. I'm a TOSA at Norton Elementary, the aviators down the street from you guys. It's really easy to get here now. Just take the Sixth Street over. And I was working with some of my students on giving them reading assessments. And about probably 12 of them said, I was looking at them trying to do CBC words. And they're like, I'm like, can you read those words? And they're like, actually, no, I can't. And I said, hmm. I said, have you tried to get glasses? They said, yeah, I had an eye test from my school nurse, and my parents don't have time to go get glasses, even though the district provides free, you know, referrals to the clinic, to an optometrist. But a lot of our families don't have time necessarily to go out into the clinic or nowhere to go get glasses. So, I called my friends at the California University of Science and Medicine over there in Colton, and I said to Nastasia Vanosuela, who's the Director of Public Outreach, and she's done work with me at San Bernardino High School, I said, I said, hey, Nastasia, do you have any community partners that provide mobile eyeglasses? And she said, yes, we do. And so, I had a little meeting with them and referred them to Ms. Williams, the Director of Swiss, and lo and behold, that was three months later. Thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. I know you had, this is under your purview, for getting this mobile eye clinic to our students. It's, if you guys know what it is, it's parked right up there at our good partners at St. Bernardino's. It's this mobile eye clinic. They don't need any gas or anything. They just have all the generators. They pull up right to the school. They bring the students in for a free eye clinic and something beyond, like an eye exam that tells like the health of the eye, the retina and all that stuff, not just like, can you see the, you know, the DMV test? And they literally onsite, they have a refractor. I don't know what that is. I think it cuts glass onsite, and it, they have lenses that students can pick, and the students will leave with the glasses. Or if they want to later on come back and if it takes like, but within two weeks, they can have brand-new glasses free of charge. So, this is like a real, this hits so many different things, because so many of our students don't have access to free eyewear. And so, this is like, kind of like the last piece within, I think, I was Senior 2030 vision on what it is, and this helps our students have vision. So, very appropriate for the time, and I just really want to thank Dr. Rodriguez and everyone else who helped approve that, and hopefully it gets approved by tonight. So, I'm sorry this is ahead of, this is on the agenda.
That's fine.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Salas. Another one of those partnerships we talked about earlier. Tracy Melgoza?
Push that button in front of you. It should turn green, right there below. There you go, on the microphone base.
Testing.
There you go.
Good evening, panel. My name is Tracy Melgoza, and I am a par educator in special education at one of the high schools in our district. And not only am I coming with experience working directly with our students currently, but I'm coming as a citizen with the hopes to better our future with students, parents, teachers, staff, and the whole world. So, I'm not here to bring you problems, but I'm here to bring you solutions. With that being said, I bring to you the Way of Honor. I have a poster in front of me. It was created by Dr. Arnold Nuremberg. He is now 82 years old. He's a licensed clinical psychologist in the state of California since 1974, which is seven, which is 50 years. He was known in the 90s as the road rage therapist of America, and he popularized the term road rage. With that being said, we have a mental health crisis. And with the implementation of these principles in every school in America, hopefully beginning with the district of San Bernardino, I believe these principles can create a change of positive respect among students, teachers, staff, and whoever recite them daily. Think about the word "honor" and what it means to you. Think about if every person in this world had more honor, what a different world this would be. So, honor is our highest constructive values enshrined by the four principles of honor. And remember, repetition is preparation for application. I choose honor above all else, number one. It's the path from wrongness and regret. Number two, I wish you well. It's a path to your peace and extension of your love and compassion. Number three, I take full responsibility for co-creating my reality and my problems. It is part of the path to your freedom. Number four, I am grateful for the power I gain from hardship. It is the path to your nobility and the attitude of a true warrior. Now, I bring you the bridge. The bridge connects the way of reality into honor. The bridge is, what is the most honorable thing to think, say, or do? In situations, you have to think, what's the most honorable thing to think? What's the most honorable thing to say? And what's the most honorable thing to do? Now, this is not about politics, race, or religion. You can bring up honor in any place in the world, and people know what honor truly stands for. Panel, I say to you, let's give this a chance. Pin up some posters in classrooms around schools and have a more honorable future for the students so they can strive for it, that the youth can digest, that our parents at home here, their children recite these pieces of wisdom, that the staff are able to exchange respect with students, and they can actually teach without distraction. If every person in the world had more honor, what a different world this would be. Extreme respect always. Now, secondly, as a former, as a former scholarship athlete, I'm not here to bring you problems. I'm here to bring you solutions. So, I have the Honor Athlete. It was also created by licensed clinical psychologist Arnold Nuremberg. At age 65, which he's 82 years old now, he took on the title of strongest drug-free man in the world for his age and weight, and he is a world champion powerlifter and champion bodybuilder. Now, what is an honor athlete? An honor athlete. I pledge by all that is sacred to me that I will not use my power and knowledge for unjust causes, but will only use it for constructive and honorable purposes. I am an honor athlete. This would be major bully prevention, especially with athletes knowing their strength they have with regular students. This is also a key to help athletic teams and schools win and lose honorably. As a former student athlete, at the end of the game, the teams line up. You know how many times the teams would line up with one another, spit in their hand, and give high fives all the way down? How disrespectful, disgusting, and unsanitary. It's a way of preventing vandalizing rival schools, damaging property, and being a sore loser. Imagine how powerful this would be if the teams collectively said this. The defeated team, we salute you in our defeat. You inspire us to come back stronger than ever. The winning team, we salute you with much respect. You inspire us to remain humble in victory. And everyone says together, I am an honor athlete. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jessica Garcia?
Good evening, Board. Excuse my voice. I have asthma, and so it's a little triggered right now. So, I come before you this evening to ask, by show of hands, can you tell me, who knows or knew that there was a Black College Expo field trip on February 10th? Show of hands? Thank you. Can you tell me, do you know the incident that occurred on that day? Show of hands? Yes? So, as a parent, I ask you, why haven't I not been informed? Why have I not received a letter? Why have I not been reached out to? My child was there. Two of my children were there. I'm a parent of a student in Virtual Academy and a student at Indian Springs High School. My daughter called me at 2:30 in the afternoon to tell me that children were scattered everywhere, screaming that someone had a gun. Okay, screaming. So, picture this scenario. You're a parent who has worked overnight shift. You get off early to drop your student off at the bus location, which was here, to ensure that she gets on the bus safely. She gets there safely. And your expectation is that the chaperone is going to be vigilant the whole time. Yes? As a parent, that's the expectation. So, as a parent, what I got was a phone call at 2:30 with my child frantic, with her boyfriend, also frantic, because they were dropped off at the L.A. Convention Center, provided with a bracelet, and told, meet us back here at 5:00. Chaperone was gone. So, when they called me, I said, where is your chaperone? Our chaperone left us. We don't know where anyone is. And if you've been to the L.A. Convention Center, you know how huge it is. You know how many floors it has. Kids scattered about everywhere. They were not given direction. They called their moms. They called me, and they called his mom, and told us what was going on. We immediately told them to grab each other's hands and run out of the building. Now, imagine, your child wakes you up. You immediately fall into action, jump in your car to get to the location of where they are, to ensure that your child is breathing and alive. Yes? So, here I am, coming all the way from Highland, flying down the freeways to get to the L.A. Convention Center, with God's grace, to ensure that I picked up my child. To only have two hours later, the chaperone called me. And what would be the first direction that you would assume someone would say to you? Anyone? Here's what I got. Do you know where your child is? Is this the parent of Michaela Watkins? Do you know where your child is? I simply said, better question is, do you know where the hell my child is? Because I, yes, I do. Two hours later, know where my child is, and she is safe. Can you tell me where she's at, and I will wait with her until you get there? Absolutely no, was my response. You know why? Because I am a parent. I am a bear of a parent. And if I found that chaperone, my immediate response would have put hands on her. And I am not a fan of violence. But simply because I asked to be a chaperone for this field trip, and I was told I had to go through procedure to be screened by school police, to have a TB test, only to find out that this event was open to the public. Were you all aware that it was open to the public? Because I did not get any notification that it was open to the public. So, there were other students, other parents, other families, driving up to this convention center, not being screened by the security, not being monitored. They went through a bag check, the worst bag check I ever heard of. They asked my daughter to open up her purse, breezed inside. Her boyfriend had a backpack on. They asked him, did someone check your bag? He said, yes, being a student, to test the system. They let him right through. So, imagine, how many children, how many adults did they let through that convention center? Here we, time, but give me 30 more seconds. Here we are, two weeks later. I have not received a phone call. I have not received a text message, a letter in the mail, an email, yet the school district consumes my email box, consumes Parent Square, with events, notifications, updates. with events, notifications, updates, attendance, grades, but yet I have not heard not a whimper. So, ask me, why do, why can I still continue to trust in those of you who are leaders when you have no follow-through ever? And my students are eleventh and twelfth graders. If they were younger, they would never go on another field trip with this district ever again. Thank you.
Thank you. Information here. Ms. Garcia, someone will contact you. Thank you for coming out tonight. That brings us to five point O, closed session.
There are no public comments.
To call the meeting back to order. Section, section six, action reported from closed session. Six point one, approval of vice principal of Virtual Academy. Be resolved, Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee, Jennifer Adams, vice principal, Virtual Academy. Effective date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding zero-three-five.
Promoted.
It was moved by Ms. Sabios and seconded by Ms. Chusky. Vote, please. Motion passed. Welcome, Ms. Adams.
Board, I do have the great pleasure of introducing you to Mrs. Jennifer Adams, who comes from us from Claremont Unified School District. Uh, we, we searched long and far to find someone with the skill, the expertise, who can continue the great work of our Virtual Academy and the online learning that's taking place there. And Mrs. Adams, uh, this, this is what her staff and her leaders or superintendent said about her. A people person, strong in leading others and caring for others, very well-versed in online technology platforms, but wants to see all scholars do well. I introduce to you at this time, Mrs. Jennifer Adams. Thank you.
Thank you. I, um, I'm a little bit nervous, so I made myself some notes. So, thank you so much for the kind introduction, Dr. Funchess, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to the board, to Board President Tillman, Superintendent Ariano, and Cabinet, and the San Bernardino City Unified School District community. I'm very honored to serve as your next vice principal for the Virtual Academy. Um, I'm grateful to have been here tonight, to have been able to see the student performances and the honors earlier, because, um, I feel like, to me, the greatest privilege of leadership is to be able to support others in accessing opportunities and building on strengths as they grow into the futures that they see for themselves. And it was evident tonight that SBCUSD is dedicated to supporting and celebrating students and staff in that same pursuit. And so, I'm just really excited to be a part of the district, to be a part of a school that's doing such unique and innovative work to support students and, um, help them find success. And so, I just, again, thank you for your confidence in me and for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving, uh, the district and the school to the best of my ability.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And six point two, expulsions of students.
Promoted.
Removed and seconded. Vote, please. Motion passed, six point three, petition to expel, rescind, seal, record, or modify youth court or expulsion. Move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. White and seconded by Mrs. Alexander. Vote, please. Motion passed, section seven, student board members. Seven point one, reports or comments by student board members. We'll start with Ms. Chavez.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Anna Victoria Chavez, and I'm a junior at San Bernardino High. Uh, a few events that have been happened, that have happened recently at San Bernardino High, um, are our Lunar New Year Winter Formal, that was, um, February tenth, at the Arrowhead Country Club. Um, we had an amazing time, and it was beautifully decorated, and Mayor Helen Tran popped in to say hello and greet the students. Um, also, we have been celebrating Black History Month every Friday this month, and we plan to have a rally during lunch on February twenty-ninth. Um, so many things, some of the things we do during lunch is like, uh, they did a finished lyrics song by like, um, African-American, um, artists. Um, so we saw this, all our students, um, just singing, and we had an amazing time. And then, another thing they did was a trivia quiz of, um, African-American, um, historical people. So, that was cool. And then, our theater is having, um, their show this weekend, um, Friday and Saturday at the Indian Springs, um, Theater. Um, I believe their show is called Spark. So, yeah, I would like, invite you guys to show up and support. Um, also, um, principal advisory has been working on designing and building our comic center on campus, and hopefully, we will have it ready for the upcoming school year. I'm definitely excited to see that before I graduate and, um, also be attending there during, um, lunch. Um, and lastly, my club, Students for Change, is currently working on coming up with a way to recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And, yeah, so we're brainstorming ideas and see what we can do. And I would just like to say thank you, staff and board members, for your hard work, and thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Elzatma?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Camille Elzatma, and I am a junior over at San Gregonio High School. First, I think a congratulations is due to Pacific High School, because their girl soccer team made it to CIF, which is incredible. I'm super excited for that. I'm a big soccer fan. Um, I also am excited that our district decided to recognize Women's History Month. As a whole, um, I'm a sister and a daughter and a friend, and so, getting to see this recognized was super exciting for me and be here for when it was recognized officially. Um, some really interesting things that happened. We had Winter Formal last Friday, which was super fun. It was kind of small, but I think everybody who was there had a lot of fun, and it felt just very cozy. Um, our students' club, Students for Change Club, which I'm part of, came up with our mission for the year. So, if you don't know, every year, Students for Change comes up with a different mission, and so, our mission is to really push students' mental health and the stigma and awareness around the students' mental health, and really push for those mental health centers on our campus. So, we're really hoping to come up like a campaign to just keep everybody informed and make sure everybody feels heard in the space. Um, our academical team actually placed ninth in district, which was, was super exciting, and we had five individual award winners. So, that was super fun for our team to get to celebrate that together. Um, the SAT is coming up, so everybody's kind of stressed out right now, especially the juniors. How do you take that? So, that kind of sucks, but hopefully, it goes well. And our school theater is getting ready to put on their play. It's a rendition of Percy Jackson. So, I'm super excited, because I was a really big Percy Jackson fan growing up. So, to get to see our school theater put on a play for them is super exciting. And so, that's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Rojo?
Evening. My name is Daisy, um, from senior and middle college. Uh, we're currently in the process of finishing our last semester of Valley College and senior celebrations. Some events taking place this month was a student-led art gallery hosted by our Black Student Union. This event acknowledged student artwork by opening it, it up to all of MCHS family. Also, um, four students from our zero-period orchestra were selected and accepted, who auditioned and accepted into the county orchestra. And I know they were recognized, because our school had the most students. But I would just wanted to thank Scott Nelson, um, for allowing this, the music program as a zero-period, aside from just being a club and providing that, as well as our teacher, Ms. Navarez, who has her own full-time job as a teacher in the music, but has also been helping with the zero-period to help us achieve that goal in the county. And then, Middle College just had their MCHS recruitment meeting last week, and, uh, they announced the opening of our application to apply for Middle College. And it was truly inspiring, um, as I myself transferred to Middle College my junior year. And I, I'm proud to say that I'll be graduating this summer with my AA of sixty college credit unit, units, and I will be using those units to transfer to four-year university. I know this program has impacted my future, and will continue to impact the generations to come. And I just thank the Middle College program, and I hope it continues to promote. Um, I'm excited to celebrate this year with my fellow class of twenty-twenty-four and continue my journey as a future teacher in the San Bernardino School District. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Section eight, administrative reports, presentations, eight point one, bond presentation.
Thank you, President Tillman. As was discussed at the last board meeting, it was requested by the board for us to provide the members of the Board of Education some information regarding, uh, what a bond is, uh, what are some of the needs that our district has, what are the financial implications if the board decided to seek a bond, what are other alternatives for funding, uh, uh, in lieu of a bond? So, uh, we will have a presentation here for you today, and we are anxious to hear any questions, uh, and get some sort of direction, uh, at the end of the presentation. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Comney.
Thank you, Mr. Ariano. Uh, good evening, board. President Tillman, Vice President Sabios, the Board of Trustees, as well as Superintendent Marie, uh, Maurice Ariano, and Executive Cabinet. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to allow us to, uh, return to present to you uh, some additional information, provide some clarification, uh, to the points that Mr. Ariano brought up, so that the board can truly make a, an informed, uh, decision on our, on our next steps as it relates to a bond. The presentation objectives. Uh, this evening, we've, uh, created the presentation around the concerns and questions expressed, uh, at the, uh, February sixth, uh, board meeting. So, as you see from the top down, we're looking at fiscal responsibility and strategies. We'll talk about need, uh, needs assessment. We'll review the district debt structure, as well as, uh, do a bond recap, and then ask for those next steps, uh, as the board desires for us to go. The photos you see are pictures from, uh, Pacific High School. You can see the auto shop just looking in there, uh, very beautiful, um, campus, uh, as they are showcasing their auto shop program at, in that picture.
Apologize, apparently, I'm, uh, novice to a technology. Uh, board, uh, as we prepared for tonight's, uh, presentation, uh, we felt it important by start, uh, by starting to acknowledge, uh, the board's concern for increasing local property taxes. Please know, we hear you. We understand the sensitivity around taxation. And we hope, uh, to show you in this presentation that we share your same thoughts and concerns, and hope to demonstrate that we strive to finance school facility improvements in many other ways before we make the ask of our community to increase local property taxes. Uh, it's important to know that since two thousand eight, we have augmented our local funding by over nine hundred million dollars. For every dollar of local bonds, we have matched it with three additional dollars. To ensure that we do not depend on local property taxes as a sole source, we have sought to augment funding sources. We have successfully sued the state of California for inequitable funding practices in the area of school facility improvements. We lease excess property to generate additional revenue. We have sold, uh, solar credits, uh, to augment our revenue. Through the investment in school facilities, we have saved the district general fund over a hundred and fifty million dollars in cost avoidance for energy and gas expenditures. Uh, and we've refinanced all of our local bonds three times, saving local taxpayers over twenty-four million dollars.
The needs assessment was a critical piece that was brought up by the board at the last meeting in terms of how do we prioritize what the district's needs are. Recent, um, surveys, uh, took us to breaking apart educational needs or programmatic needs and infrastructure needs. So, we specifically and intentionally separated those out for the board to see that collaboration was, uh, taken with our educational partners that included our teachers, our parents, um, our departments as a, in a collaborative effort to, uh, ascertain prioritized educational needs. Infrastructure need was taken on by a third party, um, performed by Kitchell, as they went through, uh, and examined our facilities. That was, uh, not at the, at the lens, if you will, of the facilities department, but taken specifically by a third party to help us identify, um, the prioritized needs within the district across all of our sites. On this slide, what you see is we've broken down the educational enhancement findings. And you can see across the, the top are perhaps the most critical educational enhancement findings that came from the collaboration between our educational partners, uh, including, uh, our visual performing arts, which is, uh, expanding due to, in part, to, uh, our Prop twenty-eight funding that we'll be receiving, which is bringing about eight and a half million dollars to our district on an ongoing basis. Our special ed, uh, classrooms, class size, um, proximity to restrooms, and so forth, are causing a strain. We're at about a fourteen percent identified rate, um, about four to five percent higher than, say, the state average. We have, uh, our portables. Eighty percent of our portables are over twenty-five years old, with a lifespan of about twenty years, uh, for each of those portables. Our early education, TK and Kay, uh, are providing, uh, additional, um, requirements related to class, class sizes, uh, restrooms, playgrounds, and so forth. Also, uh, the other programmatic parts, uh, that were examined were our college and career, uh, programming, our libraries, and also our physical education. This slide here demonstrates our infrastructure needs. Now, this was, um, taken on by our third party, uh, Kitchell, who helped us identify critical areas in infrastructure, including the top-left, uh, box that indicates that there are fourteen sites that have costs that exceed fifty percent of the identified replacement cost. So, uh, an example of that would be if, if the cost of replacement of, of the school was, let's say, ten million dollars, their repairs exceed five million. So, that's a, uh, the average cost of, of replacement would be about seventy-five million, uh, on average, for a school. So, just to give it into a smaller number understanding. We're looking at, um, sixteen sites with, uh, uh, structural concerns. Uh, we've got some that have plumbing issues. Hunt will be taking on this summer, uh, to do a major revamp in their plumbing. Uh, we've got some roofing concerns across the district. The storm that we've had, uh, two weeks ago and that has just passed brought on about five hundred- brought on about five hundred uh work orders for repair that the M and O team um has been diligently working on to resolve. But a- again, it demonstrates the magnitude of of the concern of our infrastructure. Uh, also HVAC and in-site communications uh were also found to be in need. The basic need slide, what it shows is from moving from the the top row down is prioritized by the the matching funds that we would receive for the uh for every dollar put in by the district. So the local funding needed vis-à-vis the state matching funds gives us the far-right total of the potential that the district would be eligible for. So we have immediate modernization needs, which would include eighteen of our schools. Uh, we do have uh residential growth in the north end of town that would impact our Cajon High School as well as Royal Valley. We also see that uh uh as mentioned earlier, the transitional kindergarten uh programs require additional funding to accommodate the classroom organization. And then finally, the fourth, the grayish bar at the bottom would indicate our critical facility needs uh in structural terms. So that first column shows the state matching fund potential is almost a hundred and eighty million with a hundred and fifty million uh in local um dollars needed for a grand total of approximately three hundred and twenty-three potential um dollars that could be used to uh meet these needs.
On the item where it says total residential growth need.
Yes, sir.
And you have uh local funding needed. And that's addressing the residential growth that's overloaded north-end schools, Cajon High School and a Royal Valley High School and are at and beyond capacity. So what would you do with that twenty-six million dollars?
Oh, on the north end, we have several schools that are impacted by residential growth. So uh in the Pacuma boundary uh as an example, uh, over the next three years, they're going to build an additional four hundred homes. Uh, so the money listed here would augment the feeder schools to Cajon and a Royal Valley. So you're looking at additional classroom space at Cajon, you're looking at additional class space at Chavez, and you're looking at classroom expansion at either Urbida or Pacuma. Uh, we haven't quite figured out where we would place those classrooms, but we do need more classrooms on the north end to accommodate the new homes.
So you're saying at Cajon and Chavez, we have land we could use to build additional classrooms?
Oh, yes, uh, we would have to, so in thinking of Cajon and as an as an example, we would most likely remove portables and go vertical uh for the lack of overall space at that campus. Uh Chavez, we probably have to do something similar on the back end of the campus, but we feel that overall the campuses have enough space where we could add augmented classrooms.
Better will be similar to what we did at um Holcomb and Lincoln?
Bingo. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And this uh slide really was built uh, sir, that to address what is the minimum ask. In our mind, this is the minimum need that we need to uh look at and evaluate. We have to provide uh classroom space for students as they move into the district. We have a growing special ed population. We have an early education population that we have not been able to serve appropriately, meaning we do not have Title V uh classrooms, compliant classrooms. Uh, and we also have some facility hardship. We have some code compliance items that we need to clean up at a few of our schools. Uh, and the other item there is obviously modernization. So the state uh, when you have a match, will provide uh funding for your schools. So we feel that at a minimum, you know, by any local dollar given through the state facility program, we'll be able to get more than a dollar fifty back out of the program. Then uh, so that's kind of your uh, to answer the question, that's the basic need. Now, when we uh, I think uh Superintendent Ariano hit the nail on the head when he said we also have some wants and desires. And so we tried to just show you a smattering of things that have been discussed over the years. Uh, as you can see, we have things like the Sturgis Center. Uh, we have things like Rodriguez Prep. Now, when it was recently moved to a middle school, uh, many of you may not know, but Rodriguez was built as an elementary school, so it lacks the locker rooms, the science classrooms, uh, and other spaces that truly would make it a middle school. Uh, ICEC needs some improvements made to it. Uh, the CID building, which we bought from the uh city ser- or county, I apologize, several years ago, needs improvements. Uh, and then below that, you can see the costs to the general categories that we discussed in the previous slides in athletics, uh, physical education, VAPA, your libraries, kitchens, athletics, and so forth.
Does this four hundred and fifty-five million include the hundred and forty-eight million from the previous page?
Uh, very little. There is some overlap. Obviously, modernization at the eighteen schools would take care of some of the kitchen need, library need, parking lot need identified. We feel that by the hundred and fifty million on the previous slide, about ten percent of that uh covers the overall need here. The majority of this need is outside of the uh hundred and fifty shown on the previous page. Uh, on our next slide, uh, one of the other questions that was raised is what is our outstanding debt structure and what does that look like? Uh, as you can see, uh, we have two current COPs uh this coming year. Uh, we will be paying off the Qualified School Construction Bond, which was a zero-interest loan from the federal government that we made in twenty-eleven. Uh, and you can see that we have three roughly three hundred million dollars of outstanding bonded debt. The district's uh
Question?
Yes, sir.
The bonded debt, is that um the bond that we pass in the past?
Correct. So this is all the outstanding uh debt that is currently being paid for by residential and commercial property owners within our district limits.
Right now, they're paying for three hundred and fifteen million.
Correct. And uh in coming slides, we will show what the cost of repayment is to the homeowners for the existing three hundred and fifteen before we talk about anything else. Uh, the di- we heard at the last board meeting uh
Let me ask one other question on the previous page. On the sixty-eight million dollar outstanding COPs, what are we what are you paying a month on that? Do we pay monthly payments or yearly payments?
Yearly payments.
And what are they?
Uh, they they fluctuate from two to three million.
The original um COP was for a hundred million?
Uh, yes, sir. And if you recall, the repayment of the current COP on twenty nineteen, uh, the revenue source that repays that is uh the yearly uh RDA payments that the district receives.
We're not spending any money out of general fund for uh COPs right now.
Correct. The district financial advisor, we contacted them after the last board meeting and asked them to look at alternative funding sources. And on this uh, and our municipal advisor is uh Feldman Rollup and Associates. Uh, they feel that our potential borrowing capacity utilizing a COP is roughly fifty million dollars. Uh, borrowing uh more than fifty million dollars is a possibility, but could and most likely would trigger a downgrade to our existing bond rating. As you can see, uh repayment of a fifty million dollar COP would require a three million dollar annual payment. Uh, we do not have the reserves within the RDA to pay for or augment that COP. The other alternative funding source that uh we evaluated was the general fund.
And I just to um, I wanted to touch on this specifically. There was a board concern uh or uh questions expressed at the last board meeting regarding the use of uh current dollars uh to help uh mitigate uh maintenance and repair and so forth. And we do dedicate um a fair amount uh to three percent of the general fund expenditures uh towards routine restricted maintenance, about twenty-eight million. It ebbs and flows depending on the expenditure amount for a given year. But just to uh highlight how much of that is consumed by salaries, uh, it's roughly around eighteen million dollars. So that leaves about ten to fifteen million plus or minus to be dedicated uh towards routine maintenance and repairs. Uh, with that in mind, we've had uh roughly forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand work orders submitted on an annual basis uh for routine repairs and maintenance across the district. Uh, a fairly significant number uh might be indicative of the uh of the status of our facilities to offer or to request uh so many um repairs. Also deferred maintenance is has been a doubled, a little over-doubled uh since uh twenty-two, twenty-three from a two million dollar allocation up to five million, which on average gives uh a school site about sixty thousand dollars uh to work towards its maintenance and upkeep uh on a in a given year.
Or maybe is that restricted money that comes from the state out of Prop ninety-eight or where is it? No?
No, deferred maintenance is is a uh a general fund set aside.
So there's no, just no restricted money just for facilities at the state level anymore?
No, that program went away about seven, eight years ago. Right after the uh Great Recession, the state uh stopped matching your uh routine, or I'm sorry, your deferred maintenance.
The slide is uh showing the unrestricted uh ending fund balance. Uh, again, this was a concern expressed uh at during the last board meeting. We want to make sure we address the impact uh of our uh unrestricted general fund. Um, as you see this going across this year and the two out-years, um, how the ending fund balance is uh rapidly declining and the breakout for um each of the top rows shows what is included within that. Um, like, for example, twenty-three, twenty-four shows seventy-seven point two million, uh the required set aside of two percent. Uh, we have a textbook uh adoption in the uh near future that we are setting aside, and in the remaining balance of thirty-five point one. Because of our uh structural deficit spending, you can see how the unrestricted side uh is consumed uh throughout the uh next two years.
Mr. Comma, I would never, I would never ask that you would say after you have your budget and all your documented first and second interim, you know, take your money from any of those pots. My thought would be, once you've committed to what you say your budget is and what your expected any balances, say, for instance, your any balance ended up being thirty-five million dollars more than what you expected, then that's when I would say you would take that money and use it for some of these items. Because then I can truly say to you, and that's the only time I can say it to you, any other time you would say the money is spent. But that's the only time I can say to you that you said this money wasn't gonna be there, wasn't gonna be spent, that was gonna be spent, and it dropped out. And I'm saying at that point, the Board could decide that money left over, uh, you can even wait to get to another numbers, that we'll use that money for some of these items you guys prioritize. That'd be one way of paying for some of these items.
All right, so over uh the next couple of slides, we're gonna spend some time transparently outlining what is a bond, who repays them, how much they cost, and outlining our borrowing capabilities. A bond at its core is a financial tool that enables the district and other local agencies the ability to raise funds for large capital projects. Bonds are a form of public debt and have been used many times in San Bernardino over the years. Uh, with our first school bond occurring in eighteen ninety-two for the construction of San Bernardino High School. Uh, as a side note, if you look to the lower right, uh in our records, we actually found a ballot from nineteen sixty-three for the construction of San Gregorio High School. You were asked in either a pencil, a crayon, or a pen to mark yes or a no uh for the one point nine million dollar local bond. Bonds are repaid not with the district's general fund, but by local property owners, residential and commercial. Shown here is an actual tax bill of a home within the district. Property tax bills are made up of two major components, the property assessment and the tax distribution. The amount of taxes paid by each property owner is based on the assessed value or net value of the property, the last item under the property assessment description on this slide. So the assessed value of this home is a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty-three, made by the assessor's office. Assessed value is based on the value at purchase, limited to increases up to two percent annually, which differs from market value as market values fluctuate freely and often at greater amounts than two percent annually. The median assessed value within our district is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, meaning half of the property owners within our district pay less than the amount shown here. The amount for the three hundred and three hundred million dollars of outstanding indebtedness through bonds is a hundred and thirty-two dollars. You can see that amount in purple on the slide. That homeowner currently pays two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars in total local property taxes for an effective tax rate of one point four three percent of its assessed value.
This property owner's been there a while, because I can guarantee you, you can't get a house in San Bernardino for a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
And we agree with you, sir, and we don't want uh anyone to do the math. So in the coming slide, we're actually gonna show you varying homes within our district so that we can see the cost for both residential and commercial property owners. Uh, depending on uh bond sizing, you could see an increase of anywhere from fifty-seven dollars to a hundred and fifteen dollars, moving their effective tax rate from one point four six to one point four nine in this particular instance. And before we get to those uh representative homes, we're gonna quickly show you uh some different size bond options that are available. Uh, bonds that can be explored uh for us generally in any amount from fifty million to three hundred and sixty-three million. That is our total bonding capacity. That is the limit that we are by law uh that we cannot go over. And you can
And what 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 makes the limit is because that will uh encroach on the the two percent?
Correct. So you take the total assessed value of all property within uh your area. You multiply it by two percent. That is the total bonding capacity. We are allowed to make some assumptions for future growth, uh very small uh assumptions. And so we're currently, if you take the two percent times the total amount of our assessed value, it's less than three hundred and sixty million dollars. It's about two seventy-five. And with growth projections, we're allowed to get to about three sixty-three.
How do they adjust for like the water district and the uh other people who can put bonds out there? Isn't that all factored into the two percent or does it not?
Oh, it's two percent individually. So the local, all local taxing agencies have that same limit.
This Medina?
Yes, um, I have a quick question. I know that um in looking at the the sample form from two thousand nineteen where it says one thirty-two, and then when you look at the next page, which shows this is and, and it's highlighted in pink, and one thirty-two point fifty-nine, um, add, is it and? Um, oh. That's what happens when you don't wear your glasses. And one hundred and thirty-two uh fifty-nine cents to current. Um, so is this, the one thirty-two, I just want to clarify, um, is this in addition to?
Are you would add? I think they meant to put add, right?
No, that is the current cost to the property owner.
Okay, because I was trying to figure out why the word and or add, um, but it's and.
So uh, we're gonna jump back one more slide. I'm gonna start uh here. If you look in blue on the tax bill, this property owner is being charged a hundred and thirty-two dollars. That's, we carry that forward onto the next slide. So on the left, that is a summary of their current tax bill. So the hundred and thirty-two dollars is currently what they're paying. On the right, you would add fifty-seven dollars or up to a hundred and fifteen dollars to the hundred and thirty-two.
Okay, so that could, yeah, make it uh around two hundred and and uh maybe what, fifty? Fifty dollars if it goes up to the highest point.
Correct.
So it, yeah, okay.
So on the left, you have existing, on the right, you have proposed.
And how much is the bond amount?
So the bond amount, so as we, great question, as we move forward to this, the low end, as I go back, you'll see fifty-seven dollars. That's based on thirty dollars. And I'll show you that amount right here, so the thirty. So the low end is a hundred and eighty million dollar general obligation.
If we did a bond for a hundred and eighty million dollars, it'd be extra fifty-seven. If we did it for the max of three something, it'd be.
It'd be a hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen added to the hundred and thirty-two.
Correct.
Know of any other bonds that city and county are asking that can also increase?
There are no way of controlling it.
Just see how much that would be paying. And this was two thousand and nineteen. So then, is there a significant change when you look at maybe twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three?
No, and back to this. Oh, I'm going the wrong way where I'm jumping. The twenty-nineteen assessed value of one ninety-two, it's gone up a little bit, but not significantly enough.
Okay, I I'm just because I know that property value has increased, and so I wasn't sure.
And that goes to the limit. So if you recall, market value can swing at greater rates than assessed value. So when you purchase your home, the assessor's office cannot, and that was Prop thirteen in nineteen seventy-eight, limited counties' assessment at property taxes. They capped it at two percent annually, up to two percent annually. So yearly, when you get your tax bill, you will see a new assessed value amount. So if you go back to that amount of where it said one ninety-two, you'll see every year where the county has assessed that either up or down. And during the Great Recession, many of us actually saw a decrease in our property taxes when the assessor evaluated our property lower. And so it can go up or down.
For a little while.
For a little while.
Because it's set up so that it goes down for a little while, but then it goes all the way back, but all the way back up when the assessed value goes up. But the question you ask, Ms. Medina, like going here, I have assessments for San Bernardino Valley, and this for water, the fire, and then the assistant community college. And they even have a spot here for the state school repayment. So if they, if the state passes a bond, that'd be on here also.
No, that actually is.
What's the state, what's the state?
I actually have no idea, and I wanted to call the assessor's office to ask them, but it's a good point. So there's currently a state school bond being discussed. It's anticipated that it will be put on the ballot. All state bonds are slightly different than ours. The obligation is paid from general fund revenues within the state.
So we don't know what this state, school state repayment is.
I'm just glad it says zero, sir.
Mr. Tumman, I have another additional question with regards to the 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 amount will stay the same, typically around the same amount. But if a person sells a house, then it changes. It's it's if their current homeowners, it won't change significantly. But if you're planning to purchase a home in this area, then it would, then it would change significantly.
And I think that is a perfect segue, if you don't mind.
It changed substantially.
We will, we're going to show you a home on this slide that I think demonstrates your point. Property taxes are transactional in the state of California, meaning when property is bought or sold, that is when assessed value is generated. As you can see in the middle column, we have a home. We didn't expect our homeowners to do the math. We tried to do that for them. For a home, let's say that's purchased at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you can see the cost. The, this was the additional cost for the bonds that we were just discussing, the thirty, the forty-five, and the sixty. We're also showing you because it is property owners, not just residential, that pay property taxes. So we're also showing you the impact to commercial businesses within San Bernardino. The one on the far right is an actual, the value there is, we pulled from the tax rules, a warehouse in the Inland Valley Development Agency area. And you can see what their annual increase would be as well.
This is Alexander.
Thank you, I just have a clarification question. It was similar to what board member Medina was asking. The city actually is discussing a bond. Is there any consideration or thought that? I mean, I realize we have our focus areas, but has there been any discussion with them about the bond that they're entertaining to see?
Oh, because each agency looks out for their own interest. Now, sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem. The reason why I'm asking is because I see, I understand what you're saying, but it's still the city of San Bernardino. And we're still looking at how it impacts homeowners. So I'm just wondering, is there any consideration or any idea just to see, you know, in terms of just our bond development, bond discussion? I don't know. I mean, have we thought about that? I understand what you're saying, I'm just asking.
No, I I think, you know, we've tried not to put the cart before the horse in this conversation. So, one, we've been waiting for the opportunity to share and answer some of the questions we heard last time. If the board would like to explore this further, yes, we will have those discussions within the city for who else potentially is going to have something on the ballot. We can report back what that looks like and what their needs are.
But I just want to make sure you're clear, that's not normal. The community college, I mean, Mr. Bia showed me a survey where she has some community college. When they go out and look for a bond for their school, they don't care what we're doing. And that that's part of the crux of the problem, that no one does. So then you have all these people adding on to the the cost of it. And I'm not saying that we never do. I'm just saying that it's it's the cost is substantial. And we need to make sure if we're going to look at doing it, we do it for the things that have to happen. And in this particular time especially, they just had a special today showing Karen Bass in L.A. and the homeless. And ninety percent of the people are homeless because they can't afford housing. And these type of things increase the cost of housing. Now, you'll increase homeless, but somebody will buy the house when it gets repossessed, and you'll get more revenue. But you are affecting people's lives. And the the people on fixed income, you know, the two percent of them is somewhat substantial. You're looking at a hundred and fifty bucks, but if you're getting a thousand dollars a month, you know, it means something. But I I if if the need is there, and there's some stuff that we have to have, then that's another story. Ms. Medina, your light's on.
And and I also, thank you so much for taking the time to clarify. When you look at the the commercial industrial taxpayers and you, and you know, of course, you see the different percentages and how much it is. Do you know, similar to what you put in for two thousand and nineteen as an example, one thirty-two with fifty-nine cents of school district, do you, we know what they're currently paying right now, the commercial?
Yes, so it's the same effective tax rate. If you take the value of their property and multiply it by roughly one point four three percent, that will give you their tax bill.
Currently, they're paying the one point four three percent as well.
So the the thing about the tax rolls in the county is that they are applied, the taxation rate is applied evenly across all spectrums of property.
Regardless, yes.
Correct.
And then I'm I'm sure they're paying more because their lot is a lot larger. And so, so of course, they would be paying that amount.
In this case, you would take a hundred and five million and multiply it by one point four three percent.
And they're paying that, and just to clarify, they're paying that to our school district for the bond? No, that's separate.
When he talked about property taxes for the warehouses, that money, of course, all property taxes go back to the state, but it comes back to us through Prop ninety-eight. The other piece, so when we do do a bond, the the commercial properties pay on that bond also, right? Right, so then they would help pay towards the bond. When we have an existing bond, they build a new Amazon warehouse, do they pay? They start paying towards our bond as soon as they.
Correct, and that lowers everyone else's. So every time a new home is built or new property is built in San Bernardino, it effectively lowers because the burden is shared amongst everyone. Growth is actually a good thing because it reduces the current tax burden for those who do live here. If you want to know exactly what they're paying for the repayment of our bond, if we go back to this slide, you would take the hundred and five million and multiply it by the point zero seven percent. And that will tell you the exact cost that they are paying towards our bonds. And they shoulder, commercial, the top fifteen percent commercial landowners in San Bernardino are responsible for thirty percent roughly of the repayment of our bonds.
Lyles?
Thank you, so I just have a question on the previous slide. I'm just wondering what the, no, sorry, forward. No, what the homes? That one. The the number up there, one ninety, medium, three fifty for new construction. And what is the, what do those numbers represent?
Oh, they're, they represent different, it's a stratification of different assessed values within the city. We know that not every home has an assessed value of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Probably any, I would say.
No, it's actually the exact opposite. So it's the median home price in San Bernardino is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So fifty percent are less than a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So fifty percent of taxpayers in San Bernardino pay less than the hundred and thirty-two dollars shown here for our bonds.
And that's because they've been in that house for a long time.
That's what I'm saying, because I'm not a house, I'm not a homeowner. Because I can't afford to buy a house. And any new homes that I'm looking to buy, you're looking at six hundred thousand plus, you know, to buy a decent home. And so, you know, looking at these numbers, this is going to affect me as a homeowner, and it's going to affect, you know, potentially where I choose to buy my my first home, right? So just.
You know, six hundred thousand dollars, you're paying to the district about twelve hundred dollars a year.
About what?
Twelve hundred dollars. I only know that because I pay five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. I bought my house in two thousand and eight for four hundred thousand dollars. So you time, if you pay six hundred thousand dollars for a house, it would be, you know, time and a half, so about eight, nine hundred dollars, eight, nine hundred dollars a year for that same property. But the problem is you have everybody else on there too, right? Community college, the San Bernardino vector control, wherever.
I will say a tax rate of one point four percent, an effective tax rate, is actually a very good tax rate.
It is, I agree.
That is not the norm in California.
No. Yeah, Belarus districts are crazy. Mick, I'm Ms. Chahusky.
Thank you. I know often the assessed value is often less than the purchase price. So I don't, people are getting confused because what, if you look at a tax bill, like my tax, what, what, you know, Zillow or somebody says my house is worth, if I was going to sell it, is not the same as the assessed value.
Correct.
So those are usually two different things. And I was going to point out that it doesn't matter where you go. There are bonds in every city in the state. So and that one point four three is is fairly low. That's that's the tax rate for all of the bonds that we're paying in in San Bernardino. And actually, that's the city of Highlands, so ours may be less because I don't even know that.
We compared both cities. Obviously, we were trying to pull a lot of information together. You also have the county for unincorporated land within our district. So we have varying effective tax rates, but they're all in the one point four percent range.
Thank you. You know, I'm also concerned, I mean, I, you know, I live here, I pay taxes. Some days I look at it and I'm just like, what the heck? Like everybody else. I my, you know, I feel like as a sitting board member, my responsibility is to provide the facilities that our our students need. And I'm concerned about some of the things on these lists. In particular, the TK classrooms, one hundred and fifty out of one hundred and ninety do not meet the state specifications. Sixty percent of sped classrooms do not meet state requirements. Those are really problematic for me. I I I don't feel like our student should, you know, pay the price, you know, for a lack of action. I don't know that a bond is the best way. I don't even know that that's what, how the community would want to do that. But I would be hesitant to make a decision to say we're not going to do this without having the conversation with the community, without having the survey and to see, you know, where where are they on all of this? I mean, we're making decisions. I mean, this is a difficult decision, and I get it. And and I'm as concerned, you know, both about, I know the city needs money, I know the county needs money, I know, you know, we are, just it, the needs, the water district probably just for capacity with all of the rains and, you know, flood control, and I mean, the list goes on and on. I I understand that one hundred percent. For me, though, when I see what our 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 need is, not just the want, but need, the issues that we have, the amount of money that that is, I I I think the responsible thing is, is to at least go to the community and have the conversation with the community to see where they are. They may be one hundred percent, no, we cannot shoulder this burden. And they may be say, yes, I'm willing to pay fifty-seven dollars more, a a tax statement, you know, a hundred and four dollars a year. It's not a month, it's a year, you know, to to have, to know that my son or daughter's not going to have the roof raining on them every time we have a storm come through, you know, with our new atmospheric river, Normal. So that's just kind of like how I'm feeling about it. I don't, like I said, I don't know, I am concerned about tax burden. I don't know what our best option is to meet the needs that we obviously have. But I feel that we have an obligation to have this, to have the conversation with the community and let them, that, you know, that's always the first step to say, hey, are you all even willing to entertain putting this on a ballot? And and having it widespread, you know, not, because I know sometimes there's a there's concern that they only survey certain people. But we've had good turnouts. Ms. Ariano's had really good turnouts for community meetings and a really good cross section. You know, we get to have these conversations with the FLI parents. We could have these conversations. I mean, it's where do you go to do that? And we get to decide, you know, how how broad do we want this to make, really make sure that we're understanding the impact and where our community is on on supporting our schools.
Well, Ms. Alexander, and then it's going to be Ms. Medina, and then Mrs. Grande.
So I have a few concerns because, I mean, with our needs and then the areas that we've identified are high priority. And one question that comes to mind, if the bond doesn't go through, what is our plan to take care of those items? So with having a meeting, a community meeting, because I would say let's do a community meeting before we do a survey, that would be something as a parent, as an educator in the district, a homeowner, I would want to know. Like, if that doesn't pass, what what's the plan? And then, looking at just the the history behind a bond, the development of bond, the information gave was great. It's very informative. Sharing that information probably in more of a format where people can digest it quickly would be very informative, but also to explain to the community with bonds, what's the benefit to them? Because I believe some bonds, there usually there's maybe some work credits, maybe there is an opportunity. There's some background behind that where the community can benefit. So explaining if there is a benefit. So those are just some areas that I would highlight. My biggest concern is that our median salary is sixty thousand in the city of San Bernardino. So, and this is a high rent area. So maybe that sixty thousand is reflective of, the median of sixty thousand is reflective of homeowners, but it's something to be concerned about. And just making sure that we address those concerns when it comes up. Because when we hear bonds, we think about money. So what is the benefit behind that bond?
Agreed, and I do think that, you know, there are pros and cons in all cases. The backup plan, I would say we have limited resources available for implementation of larger scale need.
This is Medina?
So when I look at the type of questions, I I do agree, you know, we have to look at the type of questions if we do decide to move forward with a survey. Because I know that it was presented the last time that came around. And I know how, when you do a survey, there's questions on the way you ask that you're kind of, you're basically already know what you're going to get as an answer. So if there's a way that when we do the surveys, maybe even doing it in an authentic way, we want to get natural responses versus trying to kind of coerce a response. And so that would be my suggestions that if we do look at doing a survey, that it be authentic, and we want to hear directly how they feel about this and how this would impact versus asking a question that you already know what the response is going to be.
And I I know you've expressed. And I, I know you've expressed that concern several times. Uh, I think there's ways we can engage the board in the creation and review of that survey material so that you felt comfortable that we're getting a wide, uh, cause you do, you want, it's not just our parents, it's not just our senior citizens. You wanna hear from all types of, uh, property owners, renters, uh, throughout the district, across all age groups, across race, across all divisions of our community, so that we do truly have a consensus. Uh, so yes, we're very sensitive, uh, to that and we would love to work with the board in ways, meaningful ways in which we can engage our community.
Right. And, and then when you look at the, just really quickly, when you look at the, the other areas that are charging, for instance, the water district, um, even with, for those that live in the city of Highland, I mean, that's a large amount, point nineteen percent, that's increased a lot. And, and I actually thought we were, we were at a higher rate. Um, I'm glad we've kept it at a low rate, but looking at what others are doing, it's like we, we're, we're trying to be conservative, we're trying to be mindful. And I think I'm proud of us for doing that. But, you know, it doesn't take away the fact that others are gonna take, you know, they're gonna abuse and they're trying to constantly increase and, and so, um, that's why I'm kinda leaning, maybe we can really look at this because others are, and it's unfortunate, you know, the homeowners, if they do plan on buying a home, it's gonna signi- it's gonna increase significantly. And a lot of times, you know, regardless is gonna be significant because of the property taxes that, um, other areas or other districts are, are, are increasing it. And I had, do have the question with regards to the general tax, maybe you already mentioned it, with one percent, is that across the board, everyone, meaning in the state of California, is that what it is?
Your base property percentage across the board in California is one percent of your assessed value. Everything else is considered your supplemental tax bill. Those are the add-ons which are governed by a two percent maximum assessed value per taxing.
It's not considered a supplemental tax bill. It is not, it's, it's considered special assessments. It's not considered a supplemental tax bill. Supplemental tax bill you get when you buy a house and you buy it in the middle of a year and then you get a supplemental tax bill because your value changed. I used to work in a tax office, so I know it's not a supplemental tax bill. All these things that are added on are called special assessments. And if we notice, if you look at the tax bill, I have mine's up, they have a phone number on there. Reason for the phone number, because the tax collector doesn't wanna explain why you're paying that extra money. So they tell you, call the number on the bill. I'm sure the school district gets phone calls, why do I got this thing on my bill?
Yes.
And how am I paying it? Cause people, people don't realize it until it happens.
And we are, we're the ones who receive that, uh, that nine oh nine three eight eight six one zero zero is the facility department phone number.
So a special assessment. Uh, Miss Grande.
Thank you. And thank you for all this clarity. I, I, I'm really excited to understand it cause I took that master's in governance and budgetary. So it's like, yay, I understand this. So I truly, really and truly do not support the timing of all of this because I think that would, um, cast a pall over our big enormous undertaking of taking on with the shine and bringing shine and bringing, making hope happen throughout our district and going in the city. And then bam, now we wanna do another survey to find out if they're gonna pay a tax. So I say it might throw some fear into this and, and it's not a good time. Let, let's bring it back in a year after shine has got, had a chance to go out and promote itself and grow and we, we gained fully the trust of everyone that we're here to, to do a wonderful things. And I just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't trust us after this. Uh, right on the heels of all the surveys about what we wanted and all that, where on there it said that they wanted a bond or wanted to go all out for money. So I'm just thinking this way. It's, it's like, uh, you know, when, when you're having a beautiful wedding and the bride is in a white dress, you, you don't come, some, come in dressed in a white dress to a wedding. You don't wanna take away anything from the moment. And we're on a, a roll here, you know, we're all in synchronicity. We, we, we're just, everywhere we go, we make people smile. It's great. And you can put it and couch it any way you want to. It's, a tax is a tax.
Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you both for your presentation. Great information. Really do appreciate it. You know, um, I'm along the lines of Miss Chusky when I look at our needs and how great they are. You know, and I know, uh, if we weren't to move forward with, with a bond or the voters, I should say, were to move forward with, uh, choosing to vote for a bond, then obviously some things will not get done, correct? I mean, we're gonna have to choose which things get done and which things do not. And that greatly concerns me. Because obviously, there's a lot of things that need to get done and some are just basic infrastructure. We're not even talking about monetization or improvements. You know, um, I know for myself, when, when I chose to run for this board and to become a board member, you know, I did so because I wanted to be able to be a part of something to create the very best for our kids in our future, our community, our families. And I feel like there, we're not still providing that. All you have to do is go visit our sites, go to some of our schools if you haven't, go to some of our older schools. I know there's projects that we'd love to do, like, you know, I, I know, um, this, granted, you have a project you'd love to see. I have a project I'd love to see. I haven't even talked about it. Because there's no way we could near those projects if we don't take care of our basic infrastructure, our basic needs. In our schools, some of them look quite dilapidated, quite old. You know, and, and, and I think about it, how many of us have children that are in school right now? Do any of us have children in school in this district? Mr. Ariano, let me ask you that. I know you raised your hand, but, but here, not here, right?
A lot of great nieces and nephews.
Yeah, and, and that's great. Because I know when my children went to schools here, I would look around and say, it wasn't good enough for them. I was displeased often with some of their sites and saying, we could do better. You know, there, there's a reason why people buy homes in Rancho Cucamonga or buy homes in Iguana or Eastville or even Redlands because they have nicer schools. They just are nicer and they're newer. You know, and so you wonder, well, how are we gonna draw folks like that to our community? Do we wanna draw folks like that to our community that could pay more for homes? You know, we have homes in North End right now going for eight hundred thousand to a million dollars. I had a house right by mine sell for one point five million dollars. So there are folks that will come here and pay, you know, for those high prices to live here, but I think we should also deliver on a high quality of home. You know, in regards to high quality of education and facilities. And, you know, I think we have a long way to go for that. And or do we just wanna continue to, with the same old same old? I don't think it hurts to survey our community, uh, to ask them what they think. Uh, what would that hurt to ask them, what do you think about putting a bond on the ballot? And I agree with you, Ms. uh, Rosales Medina, it needs to be objective. I mean, it has to be equitable. We have to have a good cross-section of everyone. Uh, and if we don't, then that is a concern to me. Because we have to look at who is gonna say what. It can't be just a certain demographic of our community saying, we wanna bond. So if it's up to me, I would say, sure, because it's an investment in our future. It's an investment in our children. It's an investment in our city. And, you know, so the city wants to look for a bond or the county or the community college, that's not for me to worry about. For me to worry about is our children in this district and that's what I'm here for. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And just, um, uh, uh, in my final comments, um, I think the conversation with the community is a good idea and getting feedback from a cross-section of folks. I want to touch on a couple of things, a few things. Miss, um, Chusky mentioned the TK and the number of sites that aren't compliant. I think you could concur. All of a sudden overnight, the state passed um, legislation that brought TK into effect. They didn't say build your, get your sites ready and then, then we'll pass it. They just did it. So that's why, Mr. Husky, you're not in compliance. It's not because we did something wrong. It's just that it got passed and now we're moving forward, we're trying to accommodate it. But I don't say that as something that's a ding on us. Um, in terms of, um, Miss, uh, Miss Grande, everybody doesn't see and they will, will not see a bond as a negative thing. Some folks will see that as a positive thing. It's just differing opinions amongst folks. That's what we're dealing with now. I can tell you right now, a bond will pass. It's because of the community that we live in. But part of the frustration for me is they don't realize the consequences of doing it. Uh, we, we talk about it and we sound cavalier about it. But when you look at the level of poverty in San Bernardino, when we pass a bond and other folks do it, you're putting people in the street. People are, you are, you're pushing them further into poverty because you're taking money away from them. And all I want us to do, if we're gonna look at these needs that we, then we prioritize. And let me say this to you. The, Dr. Wyatt mentioned schools in Redlands. They got some of the oldest schools you ever seen. They never had a bond in Redland. They don't, they, they don't, we have more new schools in San Bernardino than any district around us per capita. Am I right or wrong? There's, there, Rialto didn't build a whole bunch of new schools when we were building them. We did it because we got hardship money. And my only point in saying that is, even when you do your bond for three hundred and fifty-three million dollars, you see it on paper, it's not gonna solve everything that you wanna solve. You're still gonna have to prioritize what you're gonna spend your money on. You, and so the, and, and the worst part of it is, you, you, you get the sense that we're gonna pass this bond and everything's gonna be fixed. And it's not. You're still gonna have needs, but you're still impacting people. So I just, I, I mean, I have a totally different perspective to anybody. When I look at the numbers tonight and see this one point something billion dollar, that's like twenty-five thousand dollars per student. You said it's gonna be reduced, but even the thought of having twenty-something thousand dollars per student, that's a lot of money. And we as a district get more money than other districts because we have more students that qualify for, uh, local control funding. So as a district, we get a lot of money. Uh, I even look at it in terms of, you know, if we had to pay, what, what do you say, three million dollars or five million dollars a month if we, we were to do a fifty million dollar, uh, uh, COP? But even that could solve a lot of your problems. And you would be doing it using our existing money. And if you actually looked at making it a practice where you take some of the money into any balance, even if you just said every year you're gonna use half of it, that, you would, you would solve substantial number of problems. You'd have to, of course, prioritize this list of things that you want. But you could do it. And then if we're gonna do a bond, let's, let's do it. Maybe you don't have to do it for the full three hundred million. Maybe you do it for the hundred and fifty-something million dollars worth of needs and try to get matching funds from the state to maximize the dollars. But I just hope we move forward thinking that and, and realizing that it, it is gonna be an impact on uh, people if we do it. And, and the people never see it until it happens. And I've talked to those folks. So I, I, I just, you're not gonna have that person come to a survey. You're not gonna have the lady who's making a thousand dollars a month and bought her house and is retired and the house is paid off and she paid ten thousand dollars for the house in nineteen sixty whatever, and she's barely getting by and she sees her, the thing go up by fifty bucks and she's crying, cause you know, she gotta pay extra fifty bucks. Cause you gotta remember, folks that have their house paid for, they pay for it twice a year. April tenth and December the tenth. And I never seen anybody coming there paying their taxes happy. Most people that come, it's the truth. Most folks that come in and pay their taxes, they're barely getting by. And some people don't pay their taxes and then the tax collector sells their property. I've seen that too. So there's real consequences to it. But I agree, I think the next step is gonna be, we'll, um, get input from the community and then come back to the board and then, um, I'll, I'll, I'll defer to the superintendent to decide how you wanna have that meeting. Have one more discussion with board after you have that meeting. You can turn it around quickly and then the board will take a vote on whether or not we want to proceed with a bond. Okay?
And, and with that, can we get, cause I think you posed a great, um, comment with regards to other districts and, um, their facilities. So I'm curious and maybe with that, if they can bring forward what school districts that are high achieving school districts in this area? How much, uh, a bond amount, if they have any, um, are currently their, their taxpayers, residents are paying?
Surveyed, school districts don't pass bonds.
But I'm, I'm curious, cause see, the thing is, I was, I'd never thought about that before. And so I, that'd be good for me to actually visually see. Maybe they're gonna come back with zero. And then, then knowing how their facilities and how are they managing with the facilities they have? So I think that, that's a great, I mean, for me, I'd be interested to find out.
Can I leave you with one example? Uh, Chafe Union High School District passed a multi-billion dollar bond for six high schools several years ago. So you have some that are, uh, Long Beach is now on its, I think, ten billion dollar bond program. You have some that are on the high end and you have some, uh, that do struggle with the idea of local taxation. So it's a wide stratification. I wouldn't say that it's a, uh, one size fits all. Every community evaluates its own needs and makes determinations based, uh, on, uh, truly what their citizenry is willing to pay.
And then how are they able to move around that? I mean, with their facilities being the way it is?
Well, and with Mr. Husky.
Uh, I would say, cause some are new, newer communities with lots of buildings, so they have lots of developer fees. Some cities charge a ton in developer fees. Um, you know, where you've got like Rancho where it's like all the homes have been built in the last ten, fifteen years. They haven't had to because the developers have built schools for them. So.
And a Melrose tax, and those tax areas, what, fifteen percent?
Yeah.
I'm talking fifteen percent, crazy money. One point four percent.
Yeah. So you have to look at older communities like ours, cause ours is an older community. We don't have a lot of the big, brand new, uh, uh, except for in that North End versus, um, newer communities which have Melo roofs and other fees that have been.
And trust me, some people, when they buy those houses, when they start, when they move in, they didn't realize it happened. They just cry like babies.
Um, but that's not why I got, and then they have HOA on top of it. Um, that, I, I just wanna know, do we need consensus? Do we need a motion to move with this?
The consensus is to, I already gave them the direction to go ahead and.
Okay.
Scales will be needing to get the input.
Ask for consensus or motion.
And I'll let, I'll let Mr. Ariano tell us what he heard.
First of all, I just, uh, I wanna thank Terry and Tom. I think your presentation met, I hope, exactly what the board had asked last time. So thank you for your honesty and transparency. I believe it was very helpful. I know it was for me. Um, and I wanna thank the board for the questions that you did ask, cause it is important, uh, as our community watches in uh, to know that we are trying to act responsible and respectful. So thank you for, for the tough questions that you've asked. Um, let me go back to how was it done in Redland, just to kind of give you an idea. So we, we did not have bonds and, and President Tillman is correct, we had very old facilities. Uh, what we ended up doing is during the, um, pandemic, a lot of the general fund fallout that happened over those, uh, two years. And we used a big chunk of our S or one and S or two funds. And we decided to, uh, our priority was to redo all of the schools across the district. So that's, that's one way of how a district was able to do it. Uh, it, to be honest, that's just luck, right? Uh, we took, uh, uh, sour grapes and turned it into lemonade during the pandemic. So that's just one example of how we were able, uh, able to do that. But um, what I wanna end here is just clarification, making sure I heard exactly right, is the board is giving us, uh, direction to, A, um, put together a survey with the board that we will use or with the board's, um, involvement and approval that we will use to seek, uh, engage whether or not our community, uh, has, uh, the willingness to do this. Two, I heard, uh, the board would like us to also have in-person type of community forums to hear directly from, um, community members. And then third, come back and report that information back to the board. Did I hit all the pieces there? Okay, very good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate all your time. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Section nine, action items, nine point one, personnel report.
Pass present.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Nine point two, approval of twenty twenty-four comprehensive school safety plans.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Husky and second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please.
What happened?
Oh, question?
Oh, I have a concern about nine point two.
Go ahead.
We had a parent today that expressed her concerns of what happened on a field trip and it was related to safety. And this is an approval for a comprehensive safety plan. I, and I looked at it, one of her kids attends Virtual Academy, which that's not included in terms of the schools that is listed in the safety plan. So, um, I actually would like to see if we can go back and revisit that safety plan, make sure it's comprehensive and also include how do we handle situations like that and on field trips? Because there's no, I don't know if we even have oversight, how we deal with field trips.
I'd make a suggestion that we pass this, vote on this plan. I'd make a suggestion that we pass this, go on this plan, and then we can make changes to it, but at least have this plan in place, rather than not having the changes that staff has deemed we need right now. You can, you can, we can make sure that, uh, Mr. Ariano, you get with. Look at the changes you want to add, bring it back to the board.
Can we add that into the motion? Is that something that we can do?
You don't have to, you're just going to pass this and then bring, we can always bring it back.
I I mean, these are more for the how, what happens when there's an incident out of school site and how our partners respond, correct?
Right, this is this is the mandatory safety plan that's required by the CDE, and it has a specific template. So we're just meeting the timeline of the template. We can augment it on our own without having the board approve it to send to the state. So certainly, as as President Tillman stated, we can pass as is to meet the minimum criteria that the state requires, and then we can augment it as necessary.
And and let me say, in terms of of safety, uh, even on field trips, there are things that can happen that are beyond our control. I've been to um the Black College Expo for many, many years. I didn't go this time, but, you know, I would say we're going to leave before the end of the day, because that's when they have the step show and things got a little more rowdy. When she said it happened at two o'clock, I was really surprised, because that's in the meat of the program where you're just trying to get accepted into colleges. You can't control what happens. I I could even see where students get leave, I've been a chaperone. So I and I I've said, okay, we're going to meet back at this point at, you know, whatever time, three o'clock or two o'clock, uh, because you you have juniors and seniors, they're going to go and try to wait in line and and get accepted into colleges. Of course, there should be a contingency plan in case something goes bad. I'm not going to talk about the specific instance. But on this item, let's pass it, and then they can work with superintendent on making the changes and updates and bring it back again. Thank you. Vote, please. Motion passed, nine point three, resolution of district emergency. February twenty twenty four, storms. Moved in second, moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Motion passed, nine point four, resolution to clearing property as exempt surplus land. One acre of assessed parcel number zero one five four two eight one zero one. Again, moved by Mr. Husky and second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion passed. Section ten, consent items. Ten point one, approval of consent items.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Husky, second by Dr. Wyatt. Any to be moved? Seeing now, vote, please. Motion passed. Section eleven, reports, comments by union organizations, eleven point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No comments.
Eleven point two, California School Employees Association.
No comments.
Eleven point three, Communication Workers of America.
No comments.
Eleven point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No comments.
Section twelve, mandated policy revisions, twelve point one, approval and adoption of board policy. Five one four five point three, non discrimination slash harassment. I'll move.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Motion passed, section thirteen, board policies, bylaws, discussion, second reading. Thirteen point one, approval of new board policy, all personnel, professional, adult, student boundaries. I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Motion passed, section fourteen, reports, comments, fourteen point one, board member reports. I'll start with Mrs. Alexander.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to start off on a highlight, uh, just saying congratulations to our ETS department for an excellent um honor roll for Black students and Pacific Islanders, it was great. Um, and, you know, just the very fact that we were able to award sixteen hundred students is amazing. Um, and just be able to just be able to highlight their success, but to continue to encourage them. And um just wanted to highlight that. Also wanted to say thank you to the school board, the cabinet, honoring Assistance League. Uh, we were really honored with that award. Uh, it means a lot to us. Um, we have been around since the forties. So in order to be able to sustain the organization and be able to have an impact at the level that we do, that we have, and continue to thrive for, um, is definitely something we take serious, and we're very happy to um be able to continue working with the school district. And wanted to say thank you to Superintendent Ariano for coming out today for Operation School Bill program. Um, just being able to just see what we do in the community, but most importantly for our scholars was excellent. And just you interacting with them and talking to them and just having that personal approach. But taking out the time, especially in the rain, was appreciative. And to Dr. Rodriguez's um staff, you know, just coming out and helping us out, and I know you're there as well every month, was great. So to me, it's an honor. I am president this year, but I've been a member of Assistance League for over nine years. And um you can't really feel what we feel unless you see what we do. And we have a dental center that where we also have students that come out and that we're able to help them and really bring magic to their lives. So thank you, it's an honor for that award. Um, also, I received a couple of calls about just um gaining a little bit more insight about our pathway program related to how we, um, I guess, how we work with the community, particularly when it comes to like if there is like services that we extend out to the community. Uh, for example, um, just that what we're doing at San Andreas, so working with the restaurants. You know, do we have um any type of oversight or any policies around that? And um just gaining clarity about it, so that's just something we need to address. And it's more from a community engagement perspective. Also, another call that I got was in reference to, I guess, our equipment is outdated and our auto body auto body shop. I'm not sure of all the details, but it was something that was highlighted, and that's at Pacific. So um just some areas that maybe we need to look into, just to get clarity on, just to make sure that the community is aware of it. Um, and then related to the parent that came today, that was very disturbing. And I think we all felt her her concerns. And so that's why I feel like we need to go back and revisit our safety policy. And I understand what you're saying, that was the state. But when we look at our policies, and I know I sit on that committee, but that's something that we need to bring back up. We need to talk about it, we need to scope it out, because that can happen anywhere. And because we cannot predict what happens when situations like that arise. But if anything, we can make sure we have policies around how to address it and make sure, one, our chaperones understand what they're supposed to do, because she brought up some examples. We don't, we need to find out more, and I guess go back to the department that was responsible for um the the actual HBCU tour and find out more specifics, but that Jessica definitely has some concerns that we need to address. Um, and then we need to address them not only with her, but all the parents that whose kids attended. And then we need to look at our policy around how we um manage field trips, what is our safety measures, and then um how do we do it from an overall nine one one perspective? Um, and I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
And I just want to piggyback, it's also making sure parents are made aware at the moment. Um, I know as a parent myself, I probably do the same thing, be worried and try to shoot down there as soon as I could.
Policy, right?
Yes, yes. And so you have to, yeah, no, no, with regards to uh, uh, yes, the policy. And then I also wanted to say, um, you know, I I really do appreciate the fact that you're able to organize this in the front, because sometimes when we have presentations or student performances, um, you know, I feel like sometimes they look, they they perform for us, but in reality, it's also for the audience. And I think by us being in the front as well, um, everybody else was able to enjoy it. It wasn't just us from the podium. So I just want to say, I thought I thought that was a great idea, um, maybe some looking at doing that in the future for all performances. That way, everybody gets to enjoy it, and they're not necessarily just facing us. Thank you.
Mrs. Grunder?
Okay, well, I've had a really wonderful and busy last two weeks. Uh, I've been um in the skies, visiting my adorable great grandbaby, my first great grandbaby daughter that I've ever had in my whole life, so I'm excited about that jet leg. Uh, and I'm excited to be attending this year's Cabe. Uh, I'll be um going to as many workshops as I can, and looking forward to seeing uh some some of you there. And I am signed up for Read Across America in the next coming few weeks. I'm uh very excited about going back to Vermont School. And uh I'll be visiting there and then Emerton. And Hi-Pac is unusual in that I had a choice. I can I can do a video of myself reading and send it to them or in person. Well, since I already have a a a activity that same day, so I chose to make a video of me reading. And uh David in Communications, Mary Roan, is helping me do the video. So then we're going to send that. So I'm excited about doing that. And in the next coming weeks, I'll be going to the Your Voice Matters Symposium at Cal State, where the students are going to be expressing themselves with poetry and music and all of that kind of thing. So I'll report back to you uh next time on on how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sobios.
Um, just really quickly, I also want to say, um, you know, uh, shout out or kudos to the ETS department. I was able to, I know sometimes I can, I'm very busy with with working up the hill, but when I do get a chance to come down. And it was on a Saturday, so it was really nice to see the students being honored. Um, I was actually able to stay for the, I think there was three different um pieces. I was able to stay for our African American student recognition and honoring, but also our Pacific Islander um recognition students. So that was really nice to to be a part of, and I know Mr. Husky was there um as well. So I I enjoyed um, you know, sharing that space. Um, and I think that's pretty much it. I won't take any more time. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, just real quick comment as well, just want to say thank you to the district and the support that they have for the Making Hope Happen Foundation and honoring Dr. Margaret Hill at the breakfast. And, you know, we had, I think it was Ms. Alexander and Ms. Husky, and um our superintendent was there. So just say thank you for that. And, you know, definitely thank you to ETS department as well for uh the honor roll for our African American Black students and Pacific Islanders. I think they even added Filipino this year, so that was nice to see. And uh that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt, Mr. Husky.
Thank you. Um, I was actually able to stay the entire day for the um Black and Island Honor Roll, and kudos to the ETS department. Uh, they got us all out on the dance floor, and evidently, there is a new dance, the Boogie Shuffle that Mr. Hardy has developed. And he got us all out there uh on the floor dancing. And then uh Ms. Alexander, you missed it, but uh there were a few of us, uh, Dr. Funches, Mr. Ariano, Mr. Sobios and I, that actually had to get up on stage and hula. So that was uh, yeah, special. Um, but um it was a really wonderful event. Oh, thank you to all of our families who came out and spent their day and their time there, um, bringing their students so that we could honor them. Um, and congratulations to all of them, they all had three point O's or better, um, or threes and better if they're in elementary school. And so that was wonderful to see all that student achievement. I also was able to attend the family, uh, the Leadership Institute that with all of our parents. Um, and Ms. Consuela, who is just amazing. Um, there's an interest in having, um, our parent tonight, um, got your name, just went out of my head. You dear, uh, what's her last name? Yes, in having a student leadership at a at a a couple of our high schools. I I think that would probably be a really good idea. I'm from some high school, so I'm hoping that maybe we can follow up and see if that's a possibility. Um, I want to also say kudos to our dancers from Arroyo Valley tonight. They brought tears to my eyes, that was so beautiful and so moving. I just, I like every time I think about it tonight, I just get all teared up again, um, because it just was such an emotional thing. Um, thank you to Making Hope Happen. And um we also um attended the Dr. Hill All About the Children Breakfast. Um, and I'm really excited for the what they're trying to accomplish in terms of providing scholarship and supporting our students. Um, going to Mom Mob at Gomez this Friday, so if you are available Friday morning, Friday morning, um, there will be a Mom Mob at at Gomez Elementary School, so I'm looking really forward to that. Um, in terms of uh school safety, you know, that's always, that is my thing, um, our school safety and our 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 kids. And we talk about our safe routes and we talk about on campus. But one of the things that I thought about today is we really, um, in our new, the new age in our, in the United States, we don't talk really about what to do if there's a tragedy in a crisis and we're away from our campuses, we're on field trips. And I know as someone who's taken a lot of students on our campuses, we, you know, the, we have procedures, but I don't think we've thought about them to the extent of what do you do, um, you know, in our, in some of the crises. I even say, say, I hesitate to say active shooter, but, you know, if there's an issue like that, how how do we do that? And um so I think that might be something, I don't know whether that's the safety committee that does that, or if it's, you know, Chief Polino's area or, you know, Mr. Batera or what. But um I think it'd probably be, I would like to see us have some conversation about what does communication look like? Um, I thought there was some communication going out after this last incident, um, but what does that look like? And then um we're getting ready to gear up for selecting student board members for next year. I can't believe we're almost through it. Our student board members this year have just been amazing. I've just been so proud of them for being our pilot, um, our pilot students and really trying to to work this. And so we're working towards that. Um, and then I'd like to end, if we may, um, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence when we close tonight. Many of you probably know a parent advocate, um, I was blessed to work with three of her students, um, Brandy Paul and Michelle Ramos. Um, but Erica Delgado passed away. Um, she fought a valiant fight with cancer, and um her services are are this Friday, I'm not able to attend, but um my heart goes out to their family. Um, she's done so much and was been so active in our district for so long, that I'm wondering if we can please pause for the moment of silence.
What I'd like to do is, um, in the future, and even this time, uh, it should be agendized. We used to have a list of uh past employees or students who were recently deceased, and it'd be agendized, and it would say, we're going to adjourn in honor of them. You would take all the items, but if there was a uh specific one, you could read it. So let's just have it agendized for the next meeting, and we can take the moment of silence, because it's supposed to be agendized.
Hey, I'm sorry, we, since I've been on the board, it's been happened this way, so I, that's how I did.
The moment of silence?
Yeah, we've had a couple of them, then we've just asked for them and then asked to agenda. But however you want to do it, you're the chair. I I did it this way, because that's what I'd seen done since I've been on the board.
We can do it that way. I I didn't know we. Uh, that brings us to fourteen point two. Hold on, just so I don't, where do you want to do the uh moment of silence? Right now? Oh. Okay, I'll let you do it. All right. And then uh fourteen point two, superintendent staff.
Appreciate that, President Tillman, members of the Board of Education. First of all, I just want to make it clear, Dr. Funches and I, we nailed those dances, right?
First of all, I just want to make it clear, Dr. Funches and I, we nailed those dances, right, Marcus? We were holding it down, holding it down. We got rhythm. Yeah, I want to start off also by thanking our amazing students from Arroyo Valley High School, boy, that, that sure was a great presentation. Our students truly shine, and it was a great representation of how we honor Black history in our district. And I was reflecting on this month being Black History and thinking about all my colleagues in my past that added richness to me as a professional and definitely added richness to our district. So just want to shout out to a few of those folks, you know, Richard Patterson, who was a longtime teacher at Parkside Elementary, Pat Williams, who was a longtime elementary counselor in the district, Linda Bardear, of course, communications director, Pat Daniels, who was my vice principal and retired, I believe, as a special ed coordinator, Butch Geiger, he had the coolest walk, right? Vice principal over at Purdue and Arroyo, Gerald Thompson, who was one of our MNO supervisors, and of course his mom, Ms. Candy Thompson, that for thirty-five years worked as an instructional aide at Riley Elementary School, you know? Joyce Payne, who recently passed away, elementary principal, Duke Snyder, school police, school security guard, Purdue. Danny Tillman is chuckling because he, remember, you can still hear Duke's voice, right? Calvin White, longtime counselor and principal in the district, and Tony Dupree, former board member, so just some great people who have touched my life and students' life here in the district, so glad to see them still have an impact on our, on our community as a whole. I too want to give kudos to our ed services, in particular ETSA department, for a wonderful Saturday experience for the Black Honor Roll and Pacific Islander Honor Roll. So to Will Greer, Francine Blackshear, and Lawrence Hardy, what a great sense of community that was created on Saturday, and I just really appreciate all that they did. And thank you to the board members who were able to attend and dance and smile and shake hands. And I also want to thank Sandra, Student Services, and the Family Engagement Department for excellent, another excellent Family Leadership Institute this past week. You know, Consuelo did a great job with parents. Mrs. Alba did a great presentation on the importance of A through G, how to get into college, and really asking parents to look within themselves and not to blame, but to take command of the educational process. I just thought it was an amazing FLI, so big kudos to everyone else on that. I know at the last board meeting, the board had asked us to be a little more intentional for the mental well-being services that are available for employees. And so thanks to Mary Roan, thanks to Jeff Haynes, thanks to Marcus, and whoever else was involved, we put together a flyer campaign that went out on paper and online that really accentuates all the different resources that are available to our employees, so I wanted the board to know that we followed up on that, so it kind of looked like this. I think we may have put in a Friday update, if not, I'll put it in there, but wanted the board to know that that was important to us as well and that we followed through. I'll be joining Mary Ellen and many of our colleagues in the district at the CAVE conference this week, starting tomorrow. I'm honored to have been selected as an honorary chair for the conference, so I get the pleasure of welcoming the masses on Friday morning before the keynote speaker, that just so happens to be someone that I've worked with the last couple of years in the District of Redlands, Dr. Tyrone Howard, professor at UCLA. So that's going to be a great honor for me, but it's a great honor for me just being the representative of San Bernardino Unified. Kudos to everybody who's been in this district for years, because San Bernardino is seen as one of the leaders in bilingual education and multilingualism as an organization, so it's going to be a proud moment for me to stand up there on behalf of our district. And so with that, I'd like to finish with just a few kudos. First of all, I want to congratulate Dr. Marcus Funches, our Assistant Superintendent of HR, who is the recipient of this year's Black Culture Foundation's Black Rose Award, in particular, the Dr. Juanita Scott Humanitarian of the Year Award. Dr. Funches, we are very proud of you, and whenever someone brings distinction to our district, we like to honor that as well, so I'd like to pass this along and know that we are very proud of you, sir, and looking forward to cheering you on, so appreciate you. Next slide. Want to commend and congratulate Tex Acosta, who is our Director of Multilingual Programs, who was recently selected by the Association of California School Administrators, Region Twelve, which is all of Samaria County, as the Outstanding Central Office Administrator of the Year in Samaria County. So congratulations to Mr. Acosta. I also have a plaque for him, and at some point I'll get it to him, he could not be here tonight, but also very proud of Tex and that he and Dr. Funches are making our district continue to shine. So Tex, if you're listening in, man, congratulations to you as well. And my last kudos is to our PE program specialist, Mr. Scott Smith, who on Friday was inducted as the inaugural Cal State, Samaria, Cal State University of San Bernardino Alumni Hall of Fame. And I was there at the event Friday. Scott and I have known each other since we were thirteen years old and graduated high school together, so it was important for me to be there to cheer him on, and we're very proud of Scott. So we have three shining stars here tonight, and we want to thank them for making us look good, but also for all the contributions that they make towards our staff, our district, and our community. And with that, thank you, President Tillman.
Thank you very much. Fifteen, section fifteen, summary of board members' requests, fifteen point one, review request.
Good evening. The first request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She would like to see what bond amounts do high achieving school districts pay for their bonds and how are they managing their facilities? The next request is from Mr. Tillman and the rest of the board. They would like to request an in-person community forum to hear from the community about the bond and move forward with a survey. The next request is from Ms. Alexander. On Agenda nine point two, requested information on how we handle incidents such as what occurred during the field trip mentioned during the public comment, and requested to augment the comprehensive school safety plans as necessary and revisit the safety policies. Ms. Alexander also requested some areas to look into and address such as outdated items at pathways like Pacific Automotive. Ms. Rosales Medina requested to look into the safety policy to include making sure parents are notified about incidents such as the incident mentioned during the public comment. And the last request is from Ms. Chahaski, requested that school safety would like to see what communication would look like as far as what to do if there is tragedy on our campuses and we're away from our campus. Thank you.
Mr. Tillman? It's not on our campuses, it's when they're away, because we always, our safety plans cover when we're on our campus and we have an issue. We don't, but what happens when we're away from our campus and there's an issue away from our campus wherever we are?
Mrs. Alexander?
Clarify about the pathways. It was two items. One is when we outsource or our students are providing services to outside agencies, what is our policy? Has it been reviewed and do we have to update it? Just need more clarity around that, because there were some of the pathway programs have partnerships outside of their pathway program. For example, the one at San Andreas. And then the other one, who's in reference to the Automotive Center, the call I got was just that we need to make sure that our equipment is up to date.
And then Ms. Chahaski, your moment of silence?
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Erica Delgado de Ramos.
Sixteen, meeting adjournment?
To adjourn.
We adjourn.